Personally, remove items one and two from the consent agenda. So the draft minutes from July ninth and the draft minutes from September nineteenth. And I'll take a modified motion to accept consent agenda items three, four, and five for uh three, four, five, and six.
I want to pull four.
You want to pull four as well. Okay, so we will pull number four. So can I get a motion for items three, five, and six?
We've the motion to approve the consent agenda items three, five, and six as presented.
Okay, can I get a second? All right. Let's try Terry one more time to we'll we'll any discussion on those those one, two, three items? Okay, so we will try to take a roll call about theirs, Terry. Terry, can you confirm tonight that you are by yourself and unable to attend?
Yes, on both.
Okay, so I will start off if you did you hear the conversation about the consent agenda items number three, five, and six that we're looking to pass first?
I did not. I just now got the audio on my end, so I will just abstain.
And I will do a roll call vote internally, starting with Jason then.
Wait, yes.
Gas point, yes.
Gothier, yes.
Yes.
And Brits, yeah, so four yeses and one abstention on that one today. So let's start off with the minutes on July ninth. Greg, you had a motion that you wanted to bring up for adjusting the minutes for July ninth.
So my understanding is to click on there, I believe, as they're published now is how I'd like to accept them. So it includes the retreat presentation and it includes some modified or additional words about the discussion we had about teacher perform, teacher absentee, yes. That's all. I don't want to have to throw it away, but I'm happy with those as it's written here passing.
Okay, so in terms of the supporting documents, the actual retreat presentation and then your notes that you added on there after the fact.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a ready had a chance to review those items? Okay, so any further discussion? All right, let's take a motion to accept the minutes from July, July something, July ninth. Thank you. I'm gonna say July nineteenth. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes from July ninth? And Jason has the motion. Can I get a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Terry, can you lead the vote, please?
Uh, sure. Beam, yes.
Wait, yes.
Yes, when yes.
Gothier, yes.
Brits, yes.
Not will pass five to nothing. Shannon, you had questions on item number two, the draft minutes from September nineteenth.
I do. I just have a correction on the motion regarding um the proposed moving the mask policy or the, excuse me, the face covering policy forward of the current draft minute state that it was unanimous, but it was actually three to two. Um, so that's all I, that's my amendment to those minutes, which I sent over to Dana as well writing, but wanted to share that.
Great.
So I would make a motion to accept those minutes with that correction.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the minutes as corrected by Shannon tonight.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Terry, can you lead us in the vote, please?
Sure. Beam, yes.
Right, yes.
Gas point, yes.
Gothier, yes.
Brits, yes.
Brits, yes. So that is item number two passed. Now, the final item, the consent agenda. I will turn it back to Greg for the unanticipated revenue. These were two donations, one by the Amherst PTA and then one from an anonymous donor for approximately seven thousand dollars.
Five thousand.
Total of seven thousand.
Yes.
Two thousand from PTA, five thousand from the unnamed donor, seven thousand total to accept and expend those funds as unanticipated revenue to the general fund used to make a informational video for the school bond project.
It's like I have two major lines questioning on this. One is, is only unnamed person, is unnamed donor, is agreed to be unnamed or we don't know who it is or how how's that an unnamed? Doesn't it not have a name?
Yeah, they.
I I extrapolated anonymous there. That's my.
Someone donated the money with the stipulation that they would remain anonymous.
Is it an Amherst resident?
They're going to remain anonymous.
I mean, I think if we're having outside money coming in to influence something and I don't know if it's tied to anyone's profiting from the project, um, I think that's a concern. So that would be my first line of questioning. And we shouldn't be taking money from people in that situation that is directing S U staff time to go do something. That's inappropriate. So for that reason, we should vote no on that. And then the other thing I want to ask about is this is coming through a, this is coming directly from that, it's coming through a charitable fund managed by company. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so um, this video is that they're asking us to spend money and but their money and spend S U staff resource time towards is designed in the scope of work is designed to, among other things, be um presented at deliberative session and it's supposed to be in favor of the Wilkins project. Is that right?
I I think it's supposed to inform people about the the building project. People made videos in previous years and there is desire by the S U and people to go ahead and make the videos more professional. And so that's what does this. This is a professional company doing professional informative videos to inform the residents of Amherst and S U thirty-nine of the project.
Okay, thank you. So this is not a video we've already agreed to fund. This is something that would be well, be, it would activate S U staff to do things that currently wouldn't do. It's it's right?
No, we would participate in informational videos like as they we've done in the past, as a podcast, as a medium that in the past, you seen Tom, Tom and Steve explain the project. You seen Roger go into the building, explain the project. It's the same thing. It's just done through a professional company.
Okay, but we currently haven't voted to authorize that activity at this point, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, all right, so um, it that the deliberative, it's supposed to be debuted of the debuted in February at deliberative session. That's that deliberative session, who is the legislative body?
People in the room.
People in the room, is that a correct answer?
Yes.
Okay, now according to the terms of the fund, which this money is is derived, it cannot be used to influence legislation. Is that correct?
It can be used to inform.
It's meant to influence, isn't it?
It's meant to inform.
And that would have influence or no influence at all on the legislation?
I'm not gonna get in semantics with you, Greg.
No, I asked a question. What is?
We've produced informative videos before on all types of school projects. Is this not?
Right, you have, but that's not in this fund, I believe. This fund is not allowed to be used for projects that influence legislation and the legislative body is going to be influenced by this video as it's written. So we're not allowed to take this money. It's not legal to take this money. Why read this? To spend on this.
I I don't, I think there was some discussion about when to unveil a video. If the board didn't want to do it deliberately, that's, I don't think there's any stipulation on what I saw in the donation. There was any stipulation on when the video would be played? We we as an S U, obviously, Katie, Gary, the communications director, just discuss possible things. But if the board struggles with that, does not want to play a video, that's absolutely fine. I I what I saw and read from the from the donation, it was not stipulative. And the video was played. It was just to help support the creation of the video. If the board was uncomfortable about that at delivery, no problem.
I mean, the board doesn't even run deliberative, right? It's moderator runs deliberative. So we're not even, we can't even tell the moderator after on the video. That's a completely different issue. But my my question is, is this video going to influence the legislative body? And it is. That's why.
At that point, for anything we do, this meeting influences legislative bodies, which means we not.
No, we can't, we can't take money from this trust. That's what, that's the point. The trust, the trust stipulation that can't be used for legislation. That's what it says on this document, the attachment with the check on it. It says in here that it's not be made for the purpose of influence legislation. So it is the fact that it's dark money. We don't know what's coming from. We don't know if they have house of interest. Um, and they're going to be putting, they're they're directing resource, S U resource staff. All I hear, most of what I hear from the S U management is that the staff is so busy, we can't be distracted with more things. If you can be distracted with emotional videos, then I think we're gonna start asking you to do other work.
Right, I think, I think, Greg, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Tom, that's not. That's out of line because number one, they are busy and you know this. Number two, we have a communications coordinator, which the explicit purpose of hiring a communications coordinator was to help with projects like this. So to so to extrapolate one from the other, I think is a little out of line and and starts to get into the border of we have more work for you to do. If you're the superintendent, I think that it's up to his discretion as to how he uses staff. Now, to your point, if you want to talk specifically about this, this individual check, I think your point of the legislation piece is probably maybe valid. Maybe something, I don't know if we need to talk legal about this. I don't know if we need to run it by the donor again. And I think your point about is this a donor that would potentially benefit from the building of a school project with this video while the intent, I think, is is not like that. I I do see your point with that. I think we need to focus on that and not directing S U administration staff on what they should or should not be doing to promote a project that is going to benefit the district. And signing to promote is to inform the voters about the district. It's no different than if they created a newsletter and did that. I mean, we're gonna say they can't do a newsletter because that is not in the public.
From the trust is all.
But from the trust is different than saying that Brad is busy and that that's part of it's.
No, but but fine. I I want to be heard. Those two points I was heard. I'm fine. Thank you. Okay.
Shannon.
We've discussed the need for an informational campaign around the building project. So I'm not surprised to see that there are some plans at the district level for an informational campaign.
Correct.
I agree. I'm, I don't know if there's a an issue with the donor being anonymous for this specific item, but I will say we have accepted anonymous donations multiple times in my short stint here on the board. So that is not an uncommon occurrence. Um, and I just want to make certain, Chairman Gothier, that we are all recognized in equal time during our meeting tonight because I do feel like sometimes some of us are getting more of an opportunity to state our case and and ask our questions than others and this is not, I'm not, I'm not.
We haven't advanced the conversation, so I I will make sure that we have.
Well, we're spending a lot of time.
Correct. I will make sure that everybody gets their their fair share. So.
Thank you.
Do you have any other points or any other kind of something?
No, that's it.
Jason.
Yeah, I mean, if we're talking about accepting it, and I said, I said, I understand what you're saying, Greg. I maybe I'm naive. I don't view this as dark money. To Shannon's point, we often accept anonymous donations and isn't I I see the line you're talking about in terms of influencing legislation. We've talked about putting out videos. I think we we need to do something. I don't know that it influences legislation. I'm not. Is, I feel like that's such a broad statement, like any information.
Correct. Literally any information.
So I just.
Our entire deliberative session is meant to inform, but can be perceived as influencing legislation. So I don't think that this piece does any more, any less than what our normal uh scope of work does. So that's how I I read that.
That's, I mean, I don't know. Um. I know that donor wants to remain anonymous. I don't know if we have a non-public post and if we need to discuss this in non-public, if that lays, I don't know if that donor would be okay with that. But I'm just something that out there is if that gets people more at ease.
Jerry, any thoughts on this for you?
Why, yes, as a matter of fact. Um, I think a couple of things. It is one of our goals that we are going to communicate more with our public and with our taxpayers. It was absolutely, and this is just one of the many things that we are communicating about. If somebody came to us and said, hey, I have experience doing videos and I know that's one of the things you wanted to help communicate and they gave us their time. We would take their time and their expertise without question. And so if someone instead says, hey, I don't this isn't about me, so I want to anonymously help out, but I want to actually save the time of our S U staff by giving you a professional service so that you can have something pulled together that takes less time from your staff because you're able to pay someone to help do the production part of it and make it just a better piece overall to help communicate. I I don't see the problem. I think that it is absolutely, we are not saying how to vote. And so the legislation part is 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 beside the point. We are simply communicating truths about about our district's needs and our plans. And so I don't see this any different than someone donating time and expertise. Instead, they're donating money for someone who has time and expertise to assist. And it will actually take less effort from our S U rather than more by having that assistance. And so I am very much in support of this. And I'm grateful to the community for trying to help us in our effort to communicate more effectively.
So would somebody like to make a motion to, somebody like to make a motion on these two items? The original intent was to have a motion to accept the two donations, one from the PTA and then one from the unnamed donor for the purpose of creating a promotional video uh to be just to be displayed at deliberative, but it does not mean that we're we're stuck on that timeline. Certainly do it earlier if it's available. Does anybody want to make a motion to accept the funds as presented? I'll make the motion. Okay.
A second.
Second from Shannon. Any further discussion on this particular motion? Okay. So call the vote, Terry, please first.
Beam, yes.
Wait, yes.
Gas point, yes.
Gothier, yes. Brits, no. Okay, order one. That one will pass. And I think obviously we'll have editorial say on any video that goes through, Greg. So to your concerns about this being a promotional video, is it informational? I think we'll all have the ability to look at that and monitor that as we go along to make sure that it truly is informational and matches more what we do actually at deliberative and in some of our other sessions as opposed to a uh commercial with the Dallas Cowboy Cheerleaders, you know, pumping everybody up. So uh, not that five grand is probably covered that. So. All right, moving on to our next item tonight, we have reports. Uh, the principals will be joining us after the budget presentation, although they're here now, but they'll uh be speaking after the budget presentation. So we have the data report that Mike presented as one of the centerpieces of the reports received section. We also have facilities, treasurer and enrollment data. So I will open the floor to any questions for Mike on any of these reports. Okay. Uh, hold on. Terry, sorry, I never raised, seeing none. We will uh move on. Thank you for compiling the reports, Mike, and I appreciate the uh, the data report that is in there. Actually, I do have one question. So the data reports obviously dated back to, it's the spring of each of those years, correct? For the, I'm referring specifically to the data report involves uh standardized testing for students. It's all SAS testing, correct?
Correct.
And it has a four or five year history over the course of um grades three through eights for E L A and for math. What is the I guess, what is this being used for currently? I know that we started to compile some of this. There's still a COVID year or two in there that is probably skewing things a little bit. Um, any trends that you've noticed? Any any information you want to take away from what this looks like?
Yeah, there there's two sets of data reports in there. The first is a by grade. You know, so it's just eighth grade in spring of twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four and so on. And then there's longitudinal data that we can, you know, look at the cohort as they they move through the uh the school system from Buck Wilkins to A M S. And the purpose for us is, you know, we have made a commitment to look at data for trends um for themes, uh for areas of strength and areas of weakness, and then respond accordingly. Uh, you know, we've been compiling this data for, prior to me being the superintendent, I am organizing it and presenting it in different audiences. So people are very aware of where we are at on on in in regards to this effectiveness data. This is this, you know, everyone can get this data. Do we, we looked this for effectiveness to see how we are doing. Uh, it's not N E W A, it's not A M S web, it's not local assessments. This is state stuff where our schools are, you know, kind of uh judged or opinions are made on by performance on these particular exams. And what we do is we go ahead and and make moves based off of this. So, you know, you see the framework, the framework is you know, first two things, improve literacy. We want to be at eighty percent. You can see in certain grade levels and pockets. You know, we're not there. And we want to grow every year. And so it's, we set a a pretty high standard and it's pretty high expectation that we want to strive to in both E L A and uh and math and knowing where we are is really a first step for us. Want to have any more?
No, and we are using this data. Chris has set up times of all the grade levels that we're gonna hang out and go through the data and and Mike's using the data to meet with all the faculty. So um, you know, this is just taking a look at stuff and and um, we also were talking about adding, you know, using some title funds to increase some instructional time as well. So um, we're using the data. Um, and you know, awareness is the first step. And Tom, Terry's a better hand up.
Uh, Terry, I'm gonna go to Greg first. He uh had his hand up as he and I both had this uh question for Mike at the same time, and I'll go to you.
Thanks, Mike. Um, I didn't see anything in the Philly report about the Columbus Day work in the middle school. Was that all done well?
Um, I have not heard that it wasn't done well and I haven't touched base with Roger this week.
About the skylight?
Skylight, yeah.
Chris was a skylight.
Can I respond? I actually checked in with Roger today. Um, so I do have a little update on that I can share. I'm just gonna find it.
Why are you doing that? Got another question, Mike?
Uh, I have it now.
Okay, perfect.
However, you want to do it. Yeah, so the um delivery on the skylight, as you'll recall from, I don't know if you remember from our building and grounds committee, they were kind of waiting on that. So it was targeted for Columbus Day, but it looks like it's coming in Wednesday, next Wednesday, and the installation is on the twenty-sixth.
Is that like a weekend, twenty-sixth?
Uh, it's seventy, yeah, it is.
It's gonna be Saturday.
You're welcome.
Great, thanks, Shannon. It's awesome.
Sure.
Uh, like on the on the test results thing, uh, I like seeing the N E W A projected scores, how we're doing. I think that's a really great story because I think a lot of your your grades, our our grades in this district are outperforming the average N E W A school. And I think that speaks to success on your progress um track. So I encourage you maybe include that in the future.
So uh, we can do the second N E W A maybe in winter, uh, because we do N E W A a couple of times during the year, we can talk about that.
Okay, that's what we're typically done is we've typically had those uh numbers told again in the wintertime, and then I think we do it again in the spring.
Yeah, we could take a look.
Typically historical.
But our hope was, you know, for summer retreat stuff, we'll take a look.
Terry.
Hi, thanks. Um, so on the data, I did notice the notes about there being a large number of students that opted out of testing. Um, I don't know if it was across multiple years or just the one year where there was a lot of opt-out. And I wanted us to make sure that we're communicating to parents the importance of what we use this data for and that it doesn't give us a complete picture if we don't have um enough kids participating to really get a good, clear picture of where everyone's at. So while standardized testing is not the B L end-all as a data point, and if you have incomplete data, it makes it hard to act upon that. And so just um education with parents about how we use it, what we use it for and why it's important. I think we have started doing that, but I'd just like to encourage us to continue doing that. And on the facilities, I know that there was a mention of there being um asbestos abatement in the design wing at the middle school. And I know that I definitely heard from some moms and the moms page a little concern over that. And I wondered if we can just quickly touch upon, I mean, I know we had to do asbestos abatement at Wilkins at one point too, and some of the tiles there, I believe it was either floor or ceiling. I can't remember right now. Um, so it sounds scary whenever you say asbestos. So I'd love for us to just put into context what that actually is.
Sure. On the first one, yeah, there was a grade level that had more opt-outs um than anyone else. It was kind of, we went back and looked traditionally, there was a grade level. I think you really hold over from COVID when everything was pretty optional. Um, but Kristen has done a great job. The test attrition usually happens is you get both, you know. Um, but Kristin has done a great job. The test attrition, you know, shit happens as you get, you know, move on greater than the middle school. She's done a great job checking in, meeting with all the kids, informing parents. So I think we're definitely in the right direction there. And the grades behind that one grade are less opt outs. Regarding the asbestos stuff, as we had some leaks in the water, the, the water in the, in the floor turned up some tiles, you know, warps of tiles and that prevents the strong seal. So it was, we, we knew about it. Um, we had a plan to abate it with less invasive into the school year. Uh, but working with the state, the state requested, not demand, but requested that we move up our timeline. And so we are the 22nd, 23rd, 24th. Um, we are abating it. It's a, it's an area that is extremely easy to seal off for the rest of the school. Um, and so we feel very confident in the vendor to seal off, not have any concern, and we won't be unsealed until after air quality testing and everything else is done. So it's, it, it happens. Um, and where the, where the room is, is a very easily seal off for the rest of the world.
Thank you for those extra details. I think that's, that's comforting to anybody who hears that word and, and is nervous with it. So thank you.
Terry, uh, this was communicated and via emails to parents and staff. So people should be aware of the timeline and the process and how we're doing it. But if people have questions, we can, you know, answer further questions individually as well.
Well, but again, those letters don't go to non-parents, right? And so in, in a mixed group online, you're going to have some, some parents who have kids at the school, some who do activities at the school, but maybe don't have kids that are in that, so they didn't get that letter. So I think us being very upfront with all of our communications with a broader audience is always a good thing.
And, um, the state came in and worked with Roger on our asbestos tracking and trading and was incredibly complimentary to our tracking of our asbestos, our hero report in our documentation of training. And so we're pleased to, uh, move this timeline up, get it done.
Thanks, Steve. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Steve. Shannon?
And just to follow up on that, my understanding, I want to make sure I'm correct, the air quality monitoring is continuous throughout the abatement. It's not just once they're done, it's the while they're here. Thank you.
And this is not a tremendously complicated thing. It's for, we know where it is.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Uh, moving on to our next agenda item tonight, it is officially budget season eight. So you were, you were up.
Thank you. So I did, uh, for the board, just, just now shared the presentation and the budget file and simply, um, I have the permissions rights, so I think you can access it. This will go, um, live tomorrow on the website, uh, with the question form open. So, um, so questions can be asked. So this is draft one of the budget for the Amherst School District. And I'm going to immediately turn it over to Superintendent Barry to walk through some initial slides and then I'll pick it back up again, uh, when we get to the actual, um, financial aspect of the presentation.
Thanks, Amy. Uh, so we are in the, in budget season. This is, uh, Amherst's first draft budget. We have a long way to go. We have a lot of partnerships to work between us and the buildings, the SAU and, and the board, board and Ways and Means. So this is the start of the journey with this. And, uh, you know, there's a lot more conversation that we'll be having around it. But as people know, education is highly regulated. There's lots of laws, federal level, state level, we have a local board, policies that we have to follow, like bargaining impacts this. So there, this is a process and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank all the people that have done really good work at the buildings to develop this budget and, 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 you know, pass it off to the SAU, Ms. Spacey and her staff uh, and the people that work within there. Uh, it is a, it is a, is a heavy lift to, to develop a budget that is responsible and reflective of the community's values and that will garner support. So one of the things that, you know, we, we looked at when we budgeted is we try to be a zero base as much as we can, as often as we can when we start the process. And we also want it to be a reflection of the work that we're doing. So, you know, you'll see in this, throughout this presentation and all the work that we have here, everything is connected to the framework. And so you will see throughout here, efforts to improve literacy, efforts to improve mathematics, you'll see efforts to, you know, improve the facilities. It is a very, uh, unique essay, uh, uh, school district we have in Amherst because there is high academic expectations. And there's also this desire for people to be seen, valued, heard, and our budget to pull all those things off is, is quite complicated. And so you'll see that throughout this budget. And so I'll just go back to this. You see the priorities of our, the SAU focused on reading, instructional time, supervision and evaluation. But here's something that people don't know, you know, as much as, as, as we do here. You know, we intentionally have hired very strategically a number of administrators that are early in their career. The reason being is we want people to stay in our district and not be ready for another professional move, you know, right away. There's nothing worse than, than for us to have to onboard a new principal or onboard a new assistant principal. And so we thought, you know, and intentionally started when we had openings to target talented, capable, competent administrators that are going to be new into their roles. So you see, we have a bunch of administrators, you know, in their early parts of their career. In fact, we hired, you know, three in Amherst this past year that are in their first year. So that takes significant time. You know, I, I won't say the principals and assistant principals are high maintenance, you know, and need a lot of support because they're not, they're talented, but running Amherst is complicated. There's a lot to it. There's a lot of hidden curriculum. There's a lot of, you know, stakeholders to balance. There's a lot of decisions to be made. So that takes significant, you know, time. Um, there's also, you know, facility leadership, you know, we have, you know, Roger and Amy working, you know, very much on the facility. Steve is heavily involved in that. We have, you know, Amherst with a couple of things going on. We have Mount Vernon with some things going on. We have South Heagan with some things going on. And, and that takes, you know, time to do that and, and meetings and, and planning. And then, you know, what you'll see, you know, throughout this year and in, in continuous years, strategic planning and operational planning and, and, and basic strategy. And, uh, so super pleased with, you know, how this is trending and where this is going. We have a lot of good people in spots. We have a lot of people in the right positions at the right time and, uh, the budget kind of reflects putting talented people in there and then supporting them while they do the work and carry out the framework. Um, you can see here, Clark Wilkins and Amherst, they have, you know, their goals and their priorities. We make these very public and you can see how they're directly connected to the framework itself and it's highlighted in the presentation. And so what I hope people take away from this budget, that it was very thoughtful. It was very intentional. Uh, you know, a lot of time went into it. It's still way early for us. You know, there's still more conversations to be had. And, you know, after, as we get into this, so tonight, we're kind of passing this budget off over to the board and it's the board's budget and we are working with you. And I'm looking forward to the conversation and, uh, I'll turn it back to Amy to present where we're at right now as of October.
Thank you. So, um, let's just move forward to the next slide for the budget review. So.
I miss him.
Oh, okay. Yeah, can you refresh?
Fresh the doctor?
Yeah.
Really? Yeah. Brush, brush data. How's that?
Yeah, great. Okay. Um, so yes, so this is the FY 26, uh, draft one operating budget, uh, which is a, uh, a 3.9% increase or $1,318, $18,439 over the FY 25 adopted budget. So as a reminder, this calculation excludes the special warrant articles that were passed in FY 25 uh, to give a true apples to apples comparison between the current year and the proposed operating budgets. So for budget assumptions, uh, we recently received the rate changes for health and dental insurance. Uh, and these changes are incorporated into this budget file and, and presentation. Uh, this year, Health Trust is not providing a guaranteed maximum rate at budget time and then the actual rate in the spring, but rather they are providing the actual rate now. Um, so the rates were also provided by plan, which is not typical. Uh, and they are 13.3% for the Access Blue Five Plan, 16.8% percent for the site of service, which is an HRA plan. Uh, and 12.4% for the Luminos, which is an HSA plan and a 5% increase for dental. And then as a reminder, the AEA and ASSA contracts will be in their third year in FY 26. So those wage increases are incorporated into this budget. This past July, uh, New Hampshire Retirement System set their rates for teachers at 19.23%, which is a reduction of 0.41%, um, which is good and from the current year and for non-teachers, a rate of 12.75%, which is a reduction of 0.78%, which is also helped. So, um, typically we provide a slide that shows the proposed staffing changes. There's only one increase. Uh, this is the LEA representative that was funded as a part-time position in the current year budget. That position was made whole, uh, based on the need, on need using grant funds. So the 0.4% that was funded by the grant now needs to be added to the operating budget. So just as a reminder, that 0.4% is a new request and will therefore not be included in the default calculation. Other staffing changes include the reduction of four special education paraprofessionals, uh, both at, uh, Clark Wilkins and an additional four from at the Amherst Middle School. Uh, this is based on, um, a comprehensive review of IEPs and aligned to projected student needs. So the total net staffing change is a decrease of about $474,000. So enrollment and class size targets. Um, so this also impacts the budget. This slide shows the current FY 25 enrollment based on October 1 numbers, both for Clark Wilkins and AMS and projected enrollment for FY 26. Um, and the targeted enrollment by grade according to the minimum target and maximum goals that have been established by the board. So also included is the, um, is the most recent NASDAQ reductions for FY 26 that we, we received this past spring. NASDAQ is currently updating enrollment again and will provide us a report later this year. So total class from teacher levels will remain a status quo with some, um, a bit of movement between grades. Uh, there are a few grades that are a bit over the max target ratio and one grade that is at the minimum target ratio based on NASDAQ's current projections, but overall the administration is satisfied with the projected ratios for FY 26. So this is where I'll go into a little bit of detail. Um, this is the budget broken down by category that are reviewed um, by the Ways and Means Committee. Um, and this just provides a more manageable way to analyze changes. So for curriculum, this includes both Clark Wilkins and, and AMS. This is where the salary and benefits, including health and dental increases for most staff will show up. Um, and as a reminder, this budget incorporates those wage increases from the AEA, ASSA collective bargaining agreements that were passed by voters in March of 2023. Uh, for administration, these increases are, um, also due to wage, um, and health and dental increases. Um, for some union staff that are in this category. In addition, there was a reclassification of a social worker to a guidance counselor. So social workers are budgeted in the student services budget and guidance um, is budgeted in administration. So the increase in this budget is offset by a decrease in the student services budget. Uh, so there, they won't show up in this particular category, but overall they'll be an offset. Uh, the SRO fee has also increased due to the newly passed lease union agreement. For capital miscellaneous, this increase, um, in this category is primarily due to the SAU apportionment. Um, this is still a projection as we're waiting for the state to publish the, um, uh, enrollment or the ADA, ADNA, um, figure so that we can complete the apportionment for the SAU budget to the school districts. For facilities, um, also impacted by the increase in health, health and dental um, and non-union wage increases. We also have some increases in utilities, electric and gas, preventive maintenance contracts, um, some grounds of heat to ensure that our buildings are maintained in the best possible condition. Uh, space constraints continue to be an issue at Clark Wilkins and uh, building administration is requesting an extension of the office trailer lease to be able to maintain adequate meeting space needs. Student services, um, there are CBA wage and benefit increases in this category that are offset by the reduction in paraprofessionals, the reclass of the social worker to guidance counselor, the reduction of one of the St. Anselm's fellows, um, that have been in, that are in the current budget and, uh, changes both up and down in related services based on need. For technology, again, the wage and benefit changes, um, as well as, um, an increase in, uh, devices. Primarily this is for student and staff laptop replacements. School nutrition service, this budget is actually down primarily due to insurance elections. Uh, the non-personnel costs in this budget are relatively flat. Increases in food costs are offset by other supplies and a decrease in software. So as a reminder, we implemented a new software program that had some additional setup costs that were, are now able to be decreased. Transportation, uh, this reflects an expected decrease in special education transportation based on expected student needs. Uh, for regular education, we're still proposing to fund 16 buses. Um, we can hope uh, for next year as the goal is to ensure timeliness of home to school routes. So this is just a pie chart of the categories, just provides a visual representation of the distribution of costs. Uh, these are, as I said, the Ways and Means Subcommittee categories. And as expected, the majority of the budget is comprised of curriculum expenses followed by student services, administration and then, uh, facilities. So, um, this chart illustrates, I, I wanted to, to really be able to hone in on the impact of the health and dental rate increases. So this illustrates that, um, in the budget. So breaking apart the budget strictly by personnel versus non-personnel of that $1.3 million increase from FY 25 to 26, over 612,000 is attributed to the increase, um, in health and dental. The remaining amount of the increase is for personnel, uh, for personnel is for wages and other benefits, uh, which includes New Hampshire Retirement, like a four or three B match. And the non-personnel costs include many increases and offsetting decreases, but net to just over $31,000. So this next series of slides, um, are, are new this year. So in order to bring the board um, into the conversations that we have prior to draft one, uh, we've developed, um, a series of slides that are, were, were items that administration, um, put forth to be considered, but were cut by the superintendent. Um, so just to be able to, to offer additional transparent transparency to our process, um, we added these slides. So Mike's going to go over the next couple of slides, um, in a little bit of detail.
Yeah, so there's, there's three slides here and, and I'll just speak to the first one. Now, they're, they're, there's some of these things like, uh, sound systems and chairs and tables, uh, you absolutely need to be replaced. It's about when and how and, and so it's, please keep those things in mind. Same with like musical instruments or like some curriculum, equipment or materials. And these are, these are needs of the building, but it's about when, when we want to get these needs into our plan. And I just didn't think some of these things were, the timing was right or an absolute, as high of a need as some of the other things while we're trying to develop a budget to bring forth to this, you know, Amherst community. Um, you see some things that we don't need anymore because we do think some differently, the overnight stipends, that's an example. We're shortening the The overnight stipends, that's an example. We're shortening the trip and you don't need as much money when you don't have as much of a trip. Next slide, sir. Then then we had some things in there in the tech department, not a huge amount of things, but things that we can use the trust for. And we're gonna use the trust for this and in in budget a little bit differently there. So you see some of the the stuff, I won't get into detail or even be able to explain it that well about what kinds of stuff, materials need to go into the building to pull off the technology to run a school. Uh and there's one more. Uh and you get into, this is kind of like C W's, you know, slide there in this last one about some things that, you know, they were considering. Uh but we it's about timing. Uh with the St. Anne's Fellow, we just didn't feel like we wanted to have a second fellow uh this year based on the work that we're doing and the staff that we already have. So we thought we could budget accordingly there. Um and so what you might see is you might see some of these things return, you know, to the conversation during uh at the end of the year when we get into unassigned fund balance. Or if we, you know, you want to use potential grant monies that that are out there throughout the year. Uh but that's usually what kind of gets into a superintendent's cut list. Uh in previous years, we 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 never, you know, included this. Uh I've never been part of an a district that has included this. But in the in the name of transparency and the lack of trust shown, I think the more communication that we can have and uh you know, the better. And so I think that's why you you see a superintendent's cut list where it's where it's appropriate. Um and so uh I want to communicate that out to the board this evening.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
So next up, I'm gonna um go through the default calculation. So just as a reminder, the default calculation is the amount of the appropriations contained in the operating budget the current year reduced or increased by debt service contracts and other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law and reduced by one-time expenditures contained in the operating budget. One-time expenditures are appropriations not likely to recur in the succeeding budget. So this slide shows the total change between the F Y twenty-five operating budget and the F Y twenty-six default calculation. So the current year appropriation is reduced by the special warrant articles, um adding in contractually obligated salaries and benefits, adding in the projected S A U apportionment. Now, this will be updated um when that's finalized at the S A U public hearing, um including food service except for non-union wage and health and dental increases. Um as the expenditures are offset by revenue, so we include food service as is. Um adjusting for the decrease in debt service uh interest payment and in this case reduced by student services, um including special education transportation. So the total change between the F Y twenty-five budget and the F Y twenty-six default is one million, one hundred, two thousand, seven hundred dollars. So the proposed budget calculation, so this slide shows the difference between the F Y twenty-six default calculation and the F Y twenty-six proposed budget. These are items that are not included in the default and are therefore at risk if the budget does not pass. So besides the non-union wage and health and dental rate increases um for facilities, these are, as I stated um earlier, the print and maintenance contracts, um grounds upkeep, software, and the um office trailer and repairs. Technology is primarily the device replacements. Um administration includes the previously funded point four L E A rep wages and benefits. Uh capital miscellaneous, there's a small increase for um minute taker needs and some other administrative services and transportation. Uh there's modest rate increases for regular ed transportation that are offset by a gas cap decrease. So the difference between the F Y twenty-six default and proposed is two hundred fifteen thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars for an increase of point six percent. So this is essentially the same information, but just shown in a different way. Um this slide was developed last year at the request of a community member, and I've included um the this version in this draft one presentation. Um so I said, it's just another way of showing the difference between the F Y twenty-six default and the F Y twenty-six budget and shows the possible budget items that may be at risk should the budget fail. Uh as a reminder, the board will need to make the final decision um where this, if this happens, on what discretionary items to fund by the budget based on the bottom line dollar amount of the default. So possible items at risk um are the the cost for that point for L E A representative. Um those facility items that were previously discussed, the utility increases, office trailer, um non-union wages and benefits, um the technology, the laptops, non-union wages and benefits, and some other um instructional materials, including literacy and math um and supplies as well as that increase in the S R O fee. All right, so now we'll get to the capital reserve uh fund review. So we currently have about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the facilities reserves. Um and are recommending uh something a little bit different this year, two warrant articles. One for the six hundred and seventy-five thousand that we've typically seen coming from unassigned fund ballots and an additional warrant article uh for four hundred thousand dollars to potentially come from new taxation. So this uh recommendation was discussed and approved by the Amherst Building and Browns Committee uh based on a revised draft, although close to done, capital needs analysis plan that Roger and I have been working on in order to continue to fund the A M S roof and H VAC project as well as other projects that we need to um to complete to maintain all of the buildings in the Amherst School District. This additional warrant article is needed to save the required funds to complete the next phase of the roof H VAC project. So we will not have, um we will currently, we will not have sufficient funds to complete this ne- next phase this summer. But should these warrant warrant articles pass, um and we have the unassigned fund balance, we will have the funds to complete the next phase of the project in F Y twenty-seven. Uh the technology fund um was uh started and is um is documented in accordance with the three-year technology plan. So uh according to that plan, we're uh recommending an additional seventy-five thousand to be funded from unassigned fund balance. Uh the vehicle fund was created last year to fund uh vehicle costs, uh replacements, major um major repairs. And the recommendation to fund is to fund this at thirty thousand dollars also from the unassigned fund balance. Uh the student with disabilities fund is currently funded at three hundred and thirty-five thousand. So there's no recommend, no recommendation at this time to fund um to fund this. So this is just a summary of um of sort of the major components of the budget, not in dollar form, but in um uh in verbal form. So this budget uh is focuses on the student educational experience at the building level. Uh we're looking for continued administrative support, um including that L E A position. Uh there's an investment in literacy and math programs. The classroom teachers are aligned with class size targets and um student services are aligned with student need. There's a focus on facilities, uh continued need for space with the office trailer, uh preventive maintenance repairs, and there are utility cost increases uh for uh technology. Um we're looking for device replacements and um classroom equipment to best serve the students and teachers. Transportation cost increases uh for regular ed. We are in year four of the five-year contract, um and we are looking to run sixteen bus routes uh for special ed. We're in uh oh, actually, yeah, year five of five and regular. And then for special ed, we're in year three of uh the five-year contract. Um and there is a decreased student need in that area. So this just shows the calendar uh next steps. So Ways and Means has um has met, and I'm hoping we'll hear from them tonight. Uh tonight is draft one of the presentation. Tomorrow, the budget file and presentation will be posted on the website and the question submission form will open. I can show the budget file, but I think everybody on the board is familiar with it. And I think everyone, I went over it with Ways and Means, so I don't know. We need to do that, but the question board will be open, so folks can go ahead and start putting in questions, and that just gives the remainder of the dates. Thank you.
Okay, so I think the, we have any high-level questions that we want to ask Amy? We can do that tonight. Uh Terry, if you're listening as well, I think the better option is to, obviously, we have the question submission form in the actual budget presentation. The the next, I think the best steps are to just take a few, you know, take a few days, take a week to go through and submit your questions so that we'll be able to start having those subcommittee meetings the week of the twenty-eighth, and that will allow you to get some preliminary work done. The uh a- administration can do some research if needed, and then you can certainly discuss those fine-tuned questions and other questions that come up during those subcommittee meetings. Do you have, I mean, I know this is typically the meeting where we review the subcommittees and assign assign those for like the better work, correct? Do you have the schedule on that, or did you pass it to me and I totally missed it?
That's okay. So um we can, Steve, if you want to go to the budget file.
I can do that.
Have a little tour of the budget file. Okay, so yeah, so write that first uh question submission form, so you can see that's there. And then if you go down, see to budget calendar. Uh let me down. Uh oh, again, no, no, go back to the first. Yeah, yes. And then, yep, right there, budget calendar.
Yeah, click it.
Yep. All right, and then go to the Amherst detail. And that has all the subcommittee meetings.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so before we get into that, uh any high-level questions for Amy on anything that was presented on? Thank you very much, by the way. It was very thorough. So thank you for that. And thank you for including your cuts. Um any questions for Amy or Mike and high-level stuff before you do some takeaway and work in? Start to submit what, submit questions using the form. Any from you, Terry? I just can't see your hand raised, so if you don't, that's fine. Um the one question I had, just to understand the default piece on this, if we have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar planned savings based on what we're gonna be budgeting for, yeah, the default budget only nets us a fifteen hundred dollar savings, and overall, the default is about two hundred and fifteen short. By my understanding of this, that transportation plan for next year alone would make up for the default. Am I am I understanding that correctly? Were the savings of roughly thirty grand? Um because we wouldn't need those buses. We're not planning to use that busing right now. It's mainly special ed transportation. So if we are going to cut that anyway, whether
So that's cut in there. The special ed, that's not included in the
That's not included in the default. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, special ed, special ed is, yeah, special is proposed and default for special
Only six years that I've been doing this.
It's okay.
I think you're doing pretty well.
Yeah.
We'll see, Steve. Okay, uh if there are no further questions, then I'd like to go through this list as efficiently as possible. And with all five of us being here, it's gonna be easiest to to do this. Is there, we have access to a calendar they can look at tonight, so we can assign these subcommittee meetings?
Yeah, can we see this a little, I bigger, or is it?
It starts right underneath the uh the bolded headlines.
Yeah.
Uh so
Stop sharing so Terry can appear, so she can join the conversation.
Uh maybe easier for her to see. If she's on the share sheet.
I can still see it. It's cool.
All right, so I will make, uh I can edit, you're correct.
Yeah.
Amy.
Oh, you're gonna do, are you gonna edit?
I can, I can edit, that's fine. Uh if I actually get a better type, so. No, actually, I won't edit, so.
I can do it.
There. Uh for school nutrition, which is ten twenty-eight from eleven to twelve, uh I can, I can do that one. I'd like to be on that one if possible, so I can take that. Somebody else like to join. We typically have two board members that, for great purposes, two board members on each of these subcommittees.
I thought we already signed our committees before. Did we not already do this?
This is for, this is for the actual budget subcommittee meeting, Terry.
Yeah, I thought we had. I, maybe I'm wrong. I thought we had.
I don't kind of do it that so.
I guess my years are running together. Never mind.
So I'm happy, why don't we just do one on school nutrition? We don't need to do a lot, so I'll just do that on my own.
Can I make a request?
Yes.
So my, I have my father in town that week, so if there's any way I could take the two committees that are on Friday, the first, that would be really awesome.
And they they are offered as zoom links as well, and they're at lunchtime, so.
Yeah, okay.
If you wanted the two on the first, Shannon, I'd
I mean, I, unless someone has a strong, um, you know, affinity for the student services.
I have a conflict, same as Shannon, not her father, but your conflict, but I can only do those as well, so maybe we should just do those two.
Great.
Or else I'll check the rest of them.
Awesome. Well, and I'm happy to do the facilities one on the thirty-first as well, because he leaves.
Shannon has facilities. We'll do one each then, because I'm I'm gonna be limited with work and Jason obviously is gonna have limited availability.
Yeah, my preference is to just get one day, I'll do whatever.
Yeah.
And you can, you can join soon. And he wants. Okay, so.
Jason, you want to do Tuesday, the A M S curriculum and A M and A M S Edment?
Sure.
Okay. I can do both on Monday, school nutrition and transportation.
I can do any of the ones. If if Friday's spoken for and Monday's spoken for, I can do Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Would you like to do Wednesday, Terry?
Yeah, so the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth. I could do the thirty-first as well.
Twenty-eighth is me, twenty-ninth is Jason, thirtieth, if we can have you do that one.
Well, we were trying to have two of us, right?
Yeah, but I don't, with this, with uh, if you'd like to be the second on some of those other days, that's fine, but we have limited availability for all of us. So I can, I'm gonna commit to doing both on Monday. It's easier to get time off. Jason can do both on Tuesday. So I think a second one is gonna be a little bit of a stretch with everything else going on that week.
Yeah, but the the times that these are, I can accommodate, so I don't mind doing a little heavier lift because those are times I can make work.
Yeah, if you'd like to be the second on those.
Yeah.
If you'd like to be the second, you'll have Wednesday on your own, and if you want to be the second on anything else, feel free to fill in and then maybe you and I can split. I don't know, uh Shannon's gonna do the facilities on Thursday. And then do you want to do tech on Thursday?
Yeah.
Thirty-first. Perfect. There we go. Everybody's gonna day and then Greg will work with. Yeah.
Greg is the first.
Yeah.
So it's Greg and I all.
Better say, right? Uh, sorry, I don't say this. Oh, sorry. Today for Halloween.
So.
All Saints Day. Yes, All Saints Day. I don't think it's holiday that we get off. Please, I don't.
Just normal.
Yeah, right.
Um.
That, that Tuesday, right?
Okay, so hold on a second.
Yeah.
So on Monday, Tom has both.
Yep, I'll do both.
All right, on Tuesday, Jason has both.
Correct.
On Wednesday, Terry has both.
Correct.
And and then on Thursday, Terry has
Terry has the first and Shannon will take the second.
Has the second, and then Greg and Shannon both have Friday.
Yes.
And would, did Terry have anything extra too?
Terry, if you'd like to sign up for more to be the second, feel free on those other days, but with limited availability for some of us, this seems to be a fairly equitable way to do it. But you know, if you're willing and able and desirous of filling in on as as a second on some of those days, I will leave it up to your discretion.
Yeah, just, just let me know, and because what I'm gonna do after this, I'll send out the calendar invites.
Yeah.
If anyone wants to go to any extras, let me know and I can send them out.
Yeah, and just let me know as well, just to make sure we don't have a forum there.
Yeah.
I I'm telling you right now, I can be a second on I'm pretty much anything. And and I think it's it's beneficial to have two of us whenever we can make it work. So I'm happy to be a second on any of those days.
I will, yeah, I'll leave it to your discretion, Terry, how you'd like to work that. I will, yeah, I'll leave it to your discretion, Terry, how you'd like to work that, just let Amy know and let myself know, so that we don't have a second, second show up on any of those days. Uh, but I know that, uh, some of us have limited availability that week, so, uh, I think I'm at my capacity. And this makes it convenient to do it all in one day.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll confirm, I'll confirm an email on all of them.
Thanks, Derek. Anything else budget wise, any other questions for Amy?
Uh, just thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a really thorough first draft presentation, so I think I'll make a question input.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, please be sure to utilize that form too, the questions form as quickly as you can, so we have time to get those answers.
It's high level, I'm at Mike, I really like how you tied a lot of the budget items to the goals and the framework. And I really like also how you, um, included the things that you thought about, wasn't up on the cutting room floor, it's really nice to see that. And those are important items, and I appreciate the fact that you shared that, because it's not your decision, so.
Awesome. Okay. Uh, moving on tonight, Ways and Means has not had a meeting since, uh, the last meeting that we had, so they are going to take this back. They've, uh, they'll be meeting with Amy and going over the budget stuff and going through that, so we'll have an update from them in our next meeting, so we can skip over that. And now we will go to the principals reports. Did we flip a coin to see who would like to go first?
She's first on the agenda.
Maybe I should.
I'm happy to pick you up. Um, everyone, it's great to see you all, so I have a couple of things I just want to highlight of, um, start of the school year and things have been going really well at Clark Wilkins. Uh, the first update on there is around our tier one literacy resource and, um, that pilot that our teachers are engaged in, a hundred percent of our teachers are piloting. The resource this year, which is, um, a great experience for, uh, collaborative work, so we've started the first, uh, resource and it's been going really well. Uh, the resource engages a lot of students in, um, the lens of listening and language comprehension and includes, um, many elements of art. So it's been really, really great for opportunity for collaboration across the school with our teacher, um, and also having a really nice access point. And, um, grabbing the, you know, interest and passion of some students who may have been a little more reluctant to read a challenging text, but are really engaged within the art component of the, uh, resource as well. So teachers have been tackling that as a resource in addition to the continued work with the use of foundations as our primary phonics instruction program, decoding and encoding, use integrity for phonemic awareness still in kindergarten and first grade tier one. Um, on our October ninth early release day, we shared, uh, schoolwide literacy data, so we looked at all of our universal assessments completed in September, which includes those building level assessments in addition to required secondary level assessments in phonics or phonemic awareness, based on individual student needs, uh, completed with our reading specialist. So we looked schoolwide, then we looked at each grade level, across a grade level group. And then, uh, teachers met with reading specialists individually to talk about each one of their students and the plans they need for literacy, um, to support them best during the school year. So that was a really great, um, opportunity to work together. Liz Cannon, our new director of curriculum accountability, joined us to help tackle some of the questions around the pilot resource and ensure that we were headed in the right direction as we're, um, using these tools this year. It was a really great, uh, afternoon of professional learning. Wanted to highlight, uh, the STEM Lego robotics program. This is really exciting for us, uh, Megan Merle, our former second grade teacher, has taken on the role of technology integrator this year. As, uh, we had a retirement last year, uh, this year Megan expressed some interest in being trained and learning a bit about first Lego League or first robotics. Uh, she attended a training at first headquarters in Manchester in September, came back really excited, um, and we are tackling a full grade level, um, experience. So all students in fourth grade will be engaged with the Lego STEM curriculum this year. Each year, they, uh, change the theme, this year's theme is like ocean and submerged, and the kids are going to work together in groups to collaboratively build and code and design Lego that will help solve problems. So, uh, she started this week with two classes or last week with two classes, um, and kids are overwhelmingly very excited, uh, so much so that, uh, Megan has presented to me this week and we are moving forward with an opportunity for two competition teams to participate in first Lego League, um, at, in, in a competition in December. So we'll be sharing that out with families, looking for commitment and partnership from families for that work. We have had families reach out to us saying they have passion in that area, they would love to help us and volunteer. Um, many of our, uh, you know, many individuals in Amherst have that background in coding and engineering and are excited to help Megan get this off the ground. So, uh, we'll be working through that this year and then evaluating the success of the, uh, curriculum and how we want to move forward with potentially other grade levels in the future. Um, in addition to tho, that opportunity for students, we've released our clubs. Um, if you have an elementary age student or you have seen in our newsletter, we had, um, many of our fall clubs and the lottery has opened. We're, uh, we're being through the lottery today and tomorrow to make sure that we, um, have, we've had over two hundred and fifty kids express interest in about a hundred and fifty spots within the clubs for the fall. So we have a very methodical process in which if your child doesn't get selected in the fall, you get first priority for winter or spring clubs. Um, so we're excited about those offerings, a couple of new ones this year. Uh, we continue with our partnerships, definitely with the PTA, yesterday was Booster Thon, I think I'm still recovering from five fun runs. Um, it was an incredible day, lots of energy, many community members, parents, um, grandparents, excited. Uh, we had signs and, uh, pom poms and cowbells, um, and students had a blast. And with, uh, parent community support, you raise about fifty five thousand dollars for, uh, curriculum enrichment activities for students. So right away, those things are earmarked for experiences we do each year, such as our circus residency in grade three, our comic book residency in grade two and teacher grants. And then we'll, can I continue to grow those funds and expand offerings for our students in the school community? Uh, we've also been working with the PTA to continue our parent education series. So we have a group of teachers who are, uh, part of the committee, we have a PTA member on that committee. So we're going to be doing a winter book study, we're trying to decide the, uh, topic of the book this year. Last year, we did, um, Yard Sticks, which was a really great book for parents to learn about the developmental levels of their students. And we received really positive feedback from those book studies, so those will be coming back. Um, and in November, our PTA partnership night will be with CAST, uh, for parent education on November twenty first. So lots of exciting things going on there, um, if you have any questions or wonders about specific things, just let me know.
Hey, any questions for Dr. Mark, Jason?
Uh, first, thank you so much, I love book club, if you want suggestions, I have ideas.
Thank you.
Um, in terms, and, you know, the literacy, I really appreciate the multi-pronged approach, tackling phonemic awareness with one program, phonics and foundations. And then talk about the piloting, is that Witten Wisdom?
It is, our first pilot is Witten Wisdom, and then in the winter we'll shift to AMPI, CKL.
And then. I love this, I have a softball in this, she's doing great.
Terry.
Yeah, so I'm actually really excited about the, the Lego, um, being able to do a broader with it, because I think it's something the kids really get, um, excited about and that they can really wrap their arms around something they're already familiar with and then just taking it to that next level. So super excited to hear more about how that goes. Um, I had wanted to attend the safety, the PTA, um, safety night. And unfortunately, I was stuck at the hospital instead. How did that go? How was attendance this year? Because I know that we try different times, different things to try to, to make things accessible to parents, have we had good response so far?
Yes, the PTA Safety Night was hosted at AMS, so I'll defer to, uh, Kristen.
Yeah, so, um, we did host Safety Night, uh, the format this year was a little different than last year. Uh, so we had individual kind of vendors and representatives from the community, uh, throughout the cafeteria. And, uh, so we had, uh, of course, PTA representatives there, uh, you know, Steve Chamberlain was there, my assistant principals and I were there. I would say we probably had anywhere from maybe ten or so families there. Um, and so I'm, uh, brainstorming with the PTA to figure out how we can, um, better utilize those resources with our, our families. I think it's, you know, uh, people are pretty involved and another night activity can be a little difficult. So we're trying to figure out the best way to reduce that. Um, I found a lot of information, very interesting, I think my favorite one was, um, was that the National Guard brought the trailer. Um, they brought a trailer that was a, a bedroom, um, and we, uh, were able to kind of look through to see what type of contraband, uh, substances we could find there. And we found out, we learned all about where students can possibly hide things, and I won't, uh, a school board meeting, but, um, we, we got good experience and I, it would be something I would want to bring to a broader population at the middle school and high school in the future.
All right, if there's something, something we could share online to, to those who, who can't attend in person? Do we have some ways that we can maybe work with our new communications person to, to give some links and give some ability to share those resources?
Yeah, I mean, perhaps, yeah, we're willing to, to do whatever. We also talked about, um, later this year, the PTA is going to host with us. Um, this is something we're going to promote pretty widely, um, a technology and social media safety, uh, night. We did it a couple of years ago, um, on, it was on me, I didn't promote it as well as I probably could have. Um, but we have, um, people, uh, from our, um, state committee, um, to be able to come and do that presentation, of course, the police department has a pretty big department for this. Um, and they give an awesome presentation, that's really informative, and I think, I mean, honestly, it was even in fourth grade. Um, you know, as people start thinking about phones and social media, um, so we are thinking about how do we get more people, more turnout at that? So I think we're brainstorming about the best ways to reach people and give them the information they need.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that.
Would you like to continue on with the rest of your presentation as well?
Sure. Um, so number one, I just want to, uh, again, thank you for your support. I know about six months ago, I was, um, you know, with you and, uh, we were looking for nominations for new assistant principals. Uh, we've had, uh, a wonderful fall so far with Mike Cadire and Matt Lane. Uh, they are energized, they are hungry, they are excited, they are making connections with staff and students and families. Um, and, uh, they're, they're talented and, uh, ready to go, so we've bonded well as a team. Um, and I'm excited to, um, partner with them, uh, to continue to work in our goals for this building. Um, we've also, again, um, had an LEA coordinator, we're sharing with Clark Wilkins this year, Michelle Belanger, she's been wonderful, she's doing a lot of great work, um, with our schools to help make sure that we have some consistency with special education. She's also a really experienced special educator, so I think that she does really just play a nice kind of mentor role, um, for some of our newer special ed staff, which we've had some turnover in over the years. Um, and so I really appreciate that work that she's doing as well. And, um, she's allaying those meetings, um, which helps us be able to have our administrators a little bit more available to do other work, um, getting in classrooms and working directly with students. Um, again, we are in, uh, two pilots this year, because two is better than one. Um, so I will echo what Kathleen said about Witten Wisdom, um, so we're, we're currently, uh, tackling that with our fifth and sixth grade, uh, classes. I think the big feedback teachers are giving us is that they are seeing big improvements in writing, the quality of writing, uh, the types of structures around the writing that Witten Wisdom is including, um, and so that's kind of the biggest takeaway they have so far in the year. Um, and so I look forward to getting more feedback throughout the year, um, and, and I appreciate really just the novels, like you were saying about books, some of the, the books that a student may not ordinarily choose to read. But, um, we have a book in sixth grade, Bud Not Buddy, that the kids are just fascinated by and appreciating right now. Um, and they're getting really engaged, kids who aren't typically readers are getting really engaged in it, and the teachers are making, uh, getting engaged in it too. So, uh, kudos to those teachers. Um, we're also involved in, uh, mathematics pilot, as you know, we, we piloted illustrative last year. Um, we are, uh, we were hungry to see if there was something else out there. And so we've been working with Carnegie this year, from my observations in classrooms, um, it's going well. And, um, I know that our teachers are appreciating it. Um, and so we're going to, that's another decision as we go through the year to see what's going to be the best fit for Amherst Middle School. Um, and don't forget, we also are connected to Mount Vernon, right, grades, uh, through grade six. So, um, it, it's, it's a bigger conversation for sure, but, um, I've been pleased and our math interventionists for sure have been pleased with what they're seeing. Um, tier two, reading, so always we have, we have great resources here, and so we're always looking for ways to make those, uh, to be as efficient as we can with those resources. So I've been meeting with, uh, Heather Jennings, uh, and, uh, Liz Cannon to talk more about how we can be efficient with our services. Um, and, um, so that we can help more students, uh, who are kind of below that forty percentile. So this is an ongoing, a little bit of an ongoing conversation, um, and, uh, we are examining schedules and, uh, developing, uh, plans together for the remainder of this year and then also what it looks like in the future next year. So that's been, that's been great work so far. Um, my favorite item here is grading and reporting, uh, Power School, we switched from Empower to Power School. Um, it takes a little bit to get rolling, because assessments didn't quite go in yet, um, and, and so we opened up the portal September twenty third. Um, we're hearing some positive feedback from teachers and students, we're hearing students talk a little bit about, um, their achievement and, and advocating for themselves with teachers, like about missing assignments and how they can, uh, kind of improve their work. Ultimately, right, we want students to care about the learning and we want students to care about their progress towards those goals. Um, but I think knowing where they stand is really the first step, um, and increasing those partnerships between students, teachers and parents is, is the first basic step. Um, it is, uh, it is a pilot year, so there's a little bit of a learning curve, so we're learning things this year that are going to help us make it even better for next year. Um, I'm hosting an info session via Zoom, uh, on October twenty ninth. I thought that was a good time where we would have a lot of assessments in already for the first quarter, but then prior to progress reports and teacher conferences. So to give people some information, so the timing on that was purposeful. Um, and, uh, we are continuing to communicate with families through email and newsletters. I just sent an updated, uh, presentation out on Friday to families about how they can dig into the app and to the website, uh, and learn more of other students' progress. Um, our new assistant principal team is working on, uh, again, one of our goals, uh, one of our priorities is expanding instructional time. So we are really examining the use of movies and field trips, so we've been, we've created a new approval process for that. Um, and, uh, it involves having some conversations with people about the value of their time, um, and how things are linked curricularly, um, so that we can get to those learning outcomes. Um, I had an awesome trip two weeks ago, I got to visit Ecology School, the famed Ecology School in South Carolina. I will say the food was excellent, um, but my favorite, to, to be honest with you, my favorite part of a science teacher, um, was really the science, being able to get out with students and, and watch them, uh, interact in the field with the educators and not have cell phones for four days. Um, that, I saw kids playing that don't normally play together. I saw, um, again, just kids be kids, eighth graders be eighth graders, and I really, really enjoyed that part. The social emotional piece was huge for me, uh, had an opportunity to meet with the Ecology School, um, staff up there, the people, the, the bigwigs who run the show, Alex, um, and Drew and Meg, and they were wonderfully welcoming to me, um, and we really talked about the value of the trip. We talked about what things we would like to see them improve, we talked about the future of Ecology School for, uh, eighth grade, because as we, as you know, we do a bit, uh, five day trip in sixth, we've done a five day trip in eighth. And so it's been on the table about, do we shorten the trip? Do we do a different trip to a different ecology school or environmental school? Do we change the trip to a different location? So I'm surveying, um, families and students to try to get more information about their experiences with Ecology School. Uh, and that will help us make a decision for next year, um, so that's kind of what, that's what we're in the process of doing right now. Um, along with what Kathleen said, uh, PTA fundraiser, we're in the thirty thousand dollar range. Um, and again, that supports a lot of the things that PTA is already doing for us, so teacher grants, some of those, um, those special events, like when we have somebody come in and speak to us about, um, Greek gods and Egyptians, um, in sixth grade. Um, you know, we have, we have, we have a speaker come and talk about the Holocaust in seventh grade, so all those types of special events. Um, as another perk, something we asked for was a sign, so the Amherst Middle School sign was purchased in the late nineties, early two thousands, uh, the front of the building. Um, and so the PT, some of our PTA funds, uh, may go to that, so that would be pretty exciting for them to help us update that. Um, and, uh, many thanks to, uh, Lindsay Harrison, who's the president of the PTA, as well as Julia Keenan, who headed up our Booster, uh, Thon this year. So we're excited to see, uh, where that, those months take us. Um, Smart Pass, um, we have started a digital pass system. Um, it's really just a digital form of our written sign outs, except it's easier to read. Um, and, uh, ultimately, we're hoping to get a little bit of data from it too. Um, sometimes, you know, you talk and you say, this kid's gone out of the classroom every period, what's going on? Um, but here we can actually really see it, so we're really, um, just trying to make things a little bit more efficient. Make sure when a student says, hey, I need to go to my school counselor, they're not walking around trying to find their school counselor, they can actually ask it for a pass from their school counselor in advance, so it helps them plan. Um, and again, it's a pilot, so, um, so far, there's been some things that have been really positive and there's also been some things that we're trying to learn from and tweak. So that's, that's been good, again, in the interest of trying to make sure that we are making the best use of our instructional time and that students are safe and supervised and where they need to be. Um, and then finally, um, is, uh, just a, a thank you, because last year, uh, during budget season, we talked a lot about clubs and activities and expanding those here, um, we have been able to expand those by almost double, so I really do appreciate that support, it's really good for kids. Um, we're tracking our attendance at those, because that's going to help us plan more in the future. But just this fall, we have rock climbing, mountain biking, art club, cooking club, robotics, which is, uh, being headed up by Mr. Opry, our IND teacher, and a student at South Hegan, George Begonas, um, so we're doing first robotics, uh, so that's, that's been great. Um, theater club, we're starting theater in the fall, uh, so the kids learn about. Theater club, we're starting theater in the fall. So the kids learn about theater and then that way they're prepared to try out for the show later on. And then we have our year long clubs, National Junior Arts Society, student leadership, jazz band, homework club, those types of things. So we've been able to expand. And I think, again, a big, a big thing for middle school students is getting involved. So I'm excited that we've been able to do that.
Thank you. Any questions for Kristen? Shannon?
Well, first, I really appreciate all the work on grading and reporting. I think, you know, it was time to kind of evolve where we were with that. And I really appreciate it. I notice a difference with the students, you know, with my children and just kind of knowing more about where they're at. So I'm looking forward to the Zoom. Will that be available? Are you recording?
We're recording.
Yeah, great. So yeah, so that's great. And I really, just the club, the clubs are great. I appreciate that, that that's happening. And I'm happy to hear that the standard of robotics is going on because I think that's a really strong program at the high school. So now to have a meter for that is fantastic. So no, no questions, just to thank you for that.
Anybody else?
I was just glad to hear that you have, sorry, I was glad you're, by your new staff integrating well. So and that speaks to your leadership to setting the right culture for that integration. So just to us too as well on that. And on, on the reading, I know some school districts have like suggested reading lists per grade, usually a summer reading list, but it could be, you know, just general knowledge for year round if we're looking for Christmas break kind of reading activities. Do you have reading lists per grade that can be put in the library and the whole library and distribute to parents?
Yeah, I appreciate that. So I've been working with Tiff Mar, who is our librarian here about more ways that we can sort of work literacy into our everyday. So we've talked about, she has book clubs that she runs with students. And so I'd love students to go to write some reviews. And that way we can put those out in our newsletters and put those out in our announcements so that students, students get excited about reading. So trying to develop that culture of reading. So that's one piece of the puzzle. And I think you write on there sometimes where it's like, I don't, I don't even, I like, if I want to purchase the books in my student, I don't even know where to start. And I have the luxury of working in a school and I can have many librarians I can talk to about that. But I think if we can make that available to parents, that's a great thing. So I appreciate that feedback.
I had a question and I lost my train of thought. So Terry, anything for you?
I just want to reiterate how much we appreciate all of the thought and work that has gone into the grading and reporting changes. And really, we continue to hear really great feedback from students and parents alike. And so I'm really excited to see it rolling out in real time and, and I'm excited to see the feedback as we really live with it this year and fine tune it even more. And I know we had a lot of staff changes that I seem to have been really, really positive. And so I'm thrilled to hear that everybody's kind of feeling, feeling like they're finding their place at AMS and that the team is really coalescing. So thanks for the, for the update on that. I think that I was super excited from the early work that I saw and, and meeting everyone and hearing about it. And it's great to hear that that's continuing to go well.
Thank you, Kristen. Thank you, Kathleen. I appreciate you coming down and sticking around and presenting tonight. So enjoy the rest of the night.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good night.
Okay, as we move on, we'll go to committee updates tonight. We'll hold off on the policy one. We have a policy discussion. So Shannon and I can just give a brief recap of the policy meeting we had on Wednesday, which was yesterday. Any other committees that anybody has a note that they like to provide updates on?
Sure, yeah. Do you want me to do the policy one or do you want to do that?
You want to do it, that's fine.
So like Tom said, we'll talk about the, we have a separate policy that we'll discuss in detail. What we're really working on right now at the policy committee is wrapping up the Fall 23 updates. We had some stragglers there. So we looked at the data governance and privacy policy that'll come to an SAU board meeting soon. For our first reading, it impacts all districts and that one's just about ready to go. The policy committee is going to receive Title IX updates at our next meeting, which is on October 30th. We looked at a policy JLCDA, which was recommended by NHSBA, NHSBA. That policy is not moving forward as it's not needed. It discusses screenings that we don't do here in our district. And we already have parents signing authorization forms for ibuprofen and things like that at school.
And it's health screening.
Yeah, it does help creating, yeah. We discussed policy JICDAA slash GBEBB. Alphabet soup. That's the policy, that's the staff-student interaction. So you guys may recall last spring, we discussed this at a board meeting. This policy exists in the other districts, Mount Vernon and South Eagan. It does not currently exist in Amherst. So when we discussed this last spring, we kicked it back to the policy committee for further clarification and information. And then we said at that meeting, if you guys had any questions to forward up to me for policy, I did not receive any. At this time, the policy committee seeking additional information regarding what is the communication covered by statute, which seemed to be the primary question that we had in our meeting as a board. So more to come on that. You'll likely see it on our November agenda for a second review once we have that information and can answer those questions. GBCD, that is the, the policy that we've been discussing for a little while. And it talks about designated volunteers and background checks. And so we're looking at, is there a schedule that that should, we should be on? And it's recommended that we align on a three-year cycle like we do for substitutes. And so in discussing this in policy, the committee had questions regarding, well, what is our current practice for other individuals within the school? So we're going to take that up again at a future meeting. So again, you may hear of that in the future. So there's 23 policies for the Fall 2024 update that just released. So we'll be taking a look at that and working our way through that as we continue through our policy season, which again, we meet every other week. And just as a reminder, I'll be going to the NHSBA conference this Saturday. So I'll report back on how that goes. For building and grounds, we have met twice since our last Amherst school board meeting. And Greg, please chime in if I missed anything material to, to the meetings. We welcomed a new member, Michael Lee. In late September, we met with Bammall Architects and DEW Construction to review the project, the Wilkins project with the committee and answer any committee questions. We're anticipating updated costing and information in early November. So we'll definitely want to have that on our November meeting agenda here for the board. At our recent October 10th meeting, which Amy shared a little bit already, we spent time discussing the phasing and staging of the AMS roof and HVAC project. The committee took the official motion to support the recommendation to this board, which Amy shared already. That we continue the historical practice of requesting residents to fund the capital maintenance trust. That's at 675 out of unassigned fund balance if there's there. So no new taxation. And then to place a separate warrant article on the ballot to raise and appropriate the additional $400,000 contribution to the maintenance trust to complete the next major section of the roof. So that would be the work would begin in summer 26. So it'd be similar to the summer slam that just took place in the summer of 2026. That 400,000 is to kind of supplement the gap that will exist between the money saved utilizing unassigned fund balance and the cost of the next phase. So just as a reminder, that next phase is 10 classrooms and four bathrooms. So very similar in size and scope to the, to the project that just. PTA, I think a lot of that's been shared already. They've been busy with the Boosterathon. I did have the opportunity to attend the safety night. It was a really great event. I hope that they're able to find ways to make it work better for parents to attend because there was a lot of good information there. But right, busy time of year in the evening. For the rec commission, I did want to share with this board that Craig Fraley, the director of the rec department, has has given his resignation. He will be going on to be the department, or the rec director in Peterborough, which is very close to home. For him. So that will be effective November 1st. So APD will be seeking a new preparation director. So let's Craig and wish him well. Move on to other things.
Right. One thing to add to the building ground, we discussed further, the idea of how to accept voluntary donations. And the long story short of that thing was that we already have a vehicle that can do what we're talking about, either having one large donation or multiple small donations. Or that's still to be discussed. Is that fair?
Sorry, I didn't include that in the update, Greg, because I felt like we didn't completely.
Okay. I'll say we continue to discuss how to take the meat.
Thank you.
Terry.
Um, yeah. And Shannon, you've been really, really busy. Thank you. Lots of good updates. The roof project in general, I assume we'll be talking about that more, about the next stage and a reminder of what all the different stages will be. And I know that we still have kind of, it's up in the air a little bit about how some of the largest piece of that funding is going to work in the long run. So this is just the next phase we're talking about.
Yeah. So what we discussed as a committee and any of you all who are at the meetings, please jump in if I'm not articulating this clearly or correctly, but we're talking about what we're calling it in committee is a pay as you go, right? So we're we're looking at approximately 10 years to do, you know, everything that we need to do. And we're looking at utilizing our capital reserve fund. So continuing to ask voters to fund that through, you know, via any unassigned fund balance. We have Roger and Amy have developed their capital needs assessment that lines up with that. And then this additional, you know, at times, there may be this additional need to ask for new taxation to supplement that capital reserve. Am I missing anything? You know, if we, if, if we want to, you know, Steve, we have, we could maybe dedicate some time to this at a, at a future meeting if we wanted to look at the, the phasing and staging again, because Stephen, Roger and Amy presented a really nice presentation to the committee last week that, that had all of the pages. If you look back in a former Word packet where you have that diagram, the next section is C1, just for, you know, if you're interested in taking a look at what section is next.
One thing to add to that, Terry, is that the pay as, as you go, as presented by Steve, a nice presentation there, was the option that prevents the interest payments. So and Steve went into a lot of detail about positive interest too, we can save money. But I think that was a big winning point for several members. And we also talked about maybe even more smoothing to the funding, fundraising, I would call it. Instead of doing every two years, which is what the current plan is, I think Roger's plan, Steve's presentation, we discussed smoothly now even in the so-called off years. So we have some signal from the voters of how much support there is and less risk to, you know, shop to the plan. So I, I think we should ask those, those presentations to be included in the minutes of building grounds. And I think that'd be good to send to Terry and the other board members as well. Because I think it was really helpful view of all the options.
Yeah, I agree. And then another, you just reminded me of another good point, just to share with our fellow board members. When we were discussing, you know, what are the different ways that we could fund this? We've discussed, well, why don't we just put the 400,000 in the budget, in the operating budget? This is maintenance, we need it. But as we really started talking about it, we realized a couple of things. First of all, what we're looking to do here is, is carry this work over into FY '27. So to ask for the 400,000 for an FY '26 operating budget, we can't do that, right? Not to mention what it is to the overall operating budget. So it really in kind of talking through some of that, it made more sense to, to pull it out as its own warrant article and request because then the money can go, we can ask for the money, say what we need it for, and it can go to the maintenance trust. And once it's in trust, then we can spread it out as we need to, to schedule the work.
Great.
No, I appreciate that. Well, I mean, again, I remember the phases, I remember, but we had, we had not settled on on a funding because there were a couple of different options as we were going to come back to funding. So I appreciate the recommendation after you had a deeper discussion on specific funding options. So that was really my broader question. I definitely remember the phases. That I, that I do recall. And thank you for calling out the specific next one. And I just wanted to give a report on the Brick School Committee. We, there was indeed a meeting. I believe I was the only board member in attendance on this particular one. But we felt it was still important to decide that we just referred back to decisions that had already been discussed in that committee in order to guide budgeting for the SAU budget that was being proposed. And so rather than bring up any new business or new things, we had already said the projects that we thought were really important in trying to get ADA compliance and trying to move towards having enough money to put some ramps in at the Brick School and that that is a high priority, we think. And also some funds had to be used in the last year to deal with some HVAC issues in that building. And so we decided to give the guidance to budgeting that we knew that we took a hit on that HVAC and that we still think it's a high priority to try and be ADA compliant. And hopefully we'll be able to find a, a time that works for more of the members for a future meeting.
Thank you, Terry. And I made a note for November discussions on that phasing and staging and then the costing that you mentioned as well. So we have that for notes for the November agenda. We can get that on there as well. Okay, so moving on to our next agenda item, which is specifically around one policy that was brought up in our public comment here. So last meeting is a recap. Greg had proposed, for lack of a better term, and for succinctness, an anti-face mask policy in the school district, recommending it be part of a certain policy that already exists. This would be a subset of that policy. Greg's wording was no person shall be excluded from, denied the benefits of, or subjected to discrimination in the district's public schools because of their choice, whether or not to wear a face covering. Adding that to policy AC sub letter K. So we voted to move that over to the policy committee to get their thoughts. We referred to legal on this. And a couple of findings came out of this from legal counsel. And we had a discussion at it in policy committee. So from the legal counsel, their biggest concerns were that this creates a protected class when you start to bring up discrimination and only federal and state entities can create an actual protected class. So that wording and the functionality of this is potentially problematic. They also brought up items where there are times that students have to wear masks in school, whether it's for labs or athletics. And then that could really, you know, downward spiral or slippery slope into any sort of protective gear. If a parent doesn't want their kid to wear shoulder pads playing football, would they have the option of opting out of that? Currently, the superintendent, the authority is something that is restricted. The superintendent cannot just say, we're all wearing masks in schools tomorrow. It is a board level permission. So much like we talked about with the ability to put this policy in place, we could also just rescind it as we needed to. The same goes with what we currently have. The superintendent doesn't have that authority. We would have the ability to grant that authority, much like we did in 2020, when Adam Steele was superintendent in this first, started to come out for the 2021 school year. Special education would need carveouts. And then certainly with policies, you, you obviously have some unknowns in there. So and then lastly, policy committee feedback. The group did agree after it was brought up with the protected class item, that there are some concerns there. There was, I would say, less than majority interest, Shannon, in the policy committee to look at alternative languages. There are language that could closely more match with HB 1093, I think it was. Don't forget, 1093 recommended. That language was a little more broad, a little more generic. Is there, you know, there was some interest on the policy committee, but less than, less than half to, to see if we could, you know, wordsmith this language to more closely match that. And then, you know, we currently already have the override option. So we're going to be overriding to spending something if we were to ever go to a situation where a mask was needed or the boards wanted to vote for that. So potential solutions are to implement it as is, change the wording to something more in compliance. Obviously, if we implement as is, we could run into some issues with the discrimination piece. Cannot implement this policy, ride with the restrictions on superintendent powers that exist in the board currently. So all of that summary, I will open it up for any questions, any thoughts. And before I do, Shannon, anything you want to add to that policy?
No, I think that was a pretty fair, fair summary.
I have an initial question for you.
Yes.
On what you've mentioned. I believe you sent an email to all the board members
Correct.
with that legal advice that you just summarized. And I believe on the email, it said that that was restricted information that we couldn't share.
I summarized it. I did not give out the verbatim advice. I did summarize our legal advice, which we have the ability to do. I didn't want this to be shared with a personal email or something along those lines. So it was more just a guideline to that we have, this is what we would send our discussion.
Okay. So, you know, as the public commenter correctly said, I don't know this area very well at all. I don't know how to put policy in place. I'm doing my best. And I asked for help from the super and from all the members here. Thanks for Terry for helping me out most. So, yeah, so, okay. So I would like to know that I could have shared some of the summary with some other attorney or some other, so I can get some help. I'm not getting help from anybody from the SU helping try to find a positive way to, I understand why. Okay, so on to the, on to the material. I understand all things that you said. And so I think my intention here can, can be executed, and I hope Terry's intention is as well, is that we want to make an extra, extra barrier. There wasn't enough barriers to what we have now, to prevent a policy, which I believe was the most anti-education policy in the history of this SAU, from being implemented, which is requiring face masks to learn math and ELA. And that's the one I'm after. I don't want to deal with the complications of football. Okay, so.
But this is when.
I want to rephrase it. No, I understand. I understand the needs, I want to rephrase. So, and I shouldn't, it should not, to your point as well, should not go on AC, because AC and discrimination should not go there. I appreciate that advice. I also don't know where things should go. So I wonder if Terry would be interested in seconding a policy, a new policy under A, which has to do with student rights, AF with the next letter, called something like, no student will be denied a public education in math or ELA because they're not wearing a face covering. That seems to me all the, or avoid all the headaches that you guys pointed out, and it accomplishes my goal. And I think it has one more barrier to protect the people of Amherst and down in the future, the education in Amherst, from a board or superintendent joining in with a panic to put on another restriction against education. So is, so Terry, would you be interested in doing that?
So since I was called upon directly, I'd like to answer directly. And I'd like to say that I, I feel like the protections that are already in place, that, that nothing could happen without us having a discussion and speaking with the superintendent and expressly giving permissions to the superintendent. I feel like those protections are already there. And I don't feel, I feel like this is a little bit of a solution looking for a problem. Have you ever heard that saying? Like, but what I would like to do is meet the spirit of what you're trying to do. And what I would like to recommend instead is, I feel like as a board, if we feel like there is concern in the community that we might, because there are other states and other districts that, as we're coming into the season, and as they've had rising levels of, of different things, you know, COVID being one of them, they've said, hey, that worked pretty well before, and some of them have gone back to limited mandates, and we certainly want to assure people that that's not something we intend to do. So I would instead like to say that we could give a more, a message from the board, simply saying, hey, the season's coming up. If you, as a family, choose to send your student to school with a, with a face mask, we absolutely support that choice. However, we are not going to mandate that choice in any way. And, and if there were ever a change to that, there would certainly be a discussion, and, you know, all those other things. And by the way, please review with your kids, you know, all of the, the things this time of year, wash your hands often, don't put your hands in your mouth, all those things, right? I mean, they're good reminders anyway. So I would rather, maybe there be a message, and I would be in favor of a message from the board, but at this time, I would not be in favor of an additional policy, because after going, hearing from legal and hearing from the policy committee, I believe what we already have on the books is sufficient to, to keep it from being anything that we would do without discussion and deliberation. And again, even if we put it in right now, Greg, we, a future board could change it anyway, right? So we already have it as not a, they would have to have permission from the current board. If we put this in from this board, a future board doesn't have to keep to what we have, they could change it again. So I don't see a need for it at this time, but I am in favor of putting a more informal message from the board. I would be in favor of that if it would help members of the community feel more comfortable at this time.
I appreciate that, Terry. Thanks for your time. I'm willing to support you in that statement, if we're having a vote on, on good advice.
Does anybody have any comments on Terry's, I mean, we don't have a motion on the floor, so I think we're looking more, Terry, would you like to make a motion to what you just, would you like to make a motion, and would you like to volunteer to write said statement?
Sure. I would be happy to make a motion that we, that we give a, a general statement to the families in, in the Amherst School District, saying that they are welcome to make a personal decision on this for their families, and it will be respected, and to provide reassurances that we will not mandate, and general good advice for, for ways to keep each other safe this time of year. And I'm happy to help, to help work with fellow board members to, to craft a message we can all be comfortable with.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second, I have a second for break. Shannon or Jason, any thoughts from you on this?
I mean, I'd have to see what the message said, you know.
So we'll come back next month, Terry. Is that the idea?
I'm sure, or I think that we could, we could socialize by email the message before the next meeting, and then we could vote on it at the next meeting. I think that'd be, we could get it out beforehand, so people had time to sit with it and make recommendations. And, and then if we got language we were all comfortable with, we could vote on it next month.
Shannon?
Yeah, I mean, like Jason and I, we need to see what it says. I would, I would need to see what it says before I can say I would support something like that.
No, do you support the idea of crafting? This is, is the question, yeah. It's not voting on any sort of message, saying that we're going to release it. It's the idea of crafting it and then voting on whether or not we're going to do it. Yeah.
Sure.
So I'm, I'm happy, the same thing with Shannon. I, I think, again, that this, what's the, the problem in search of a solution is a good way to do it.
Solution in search of a problem.
In search of a solution would be a good thing. I, I still don't, I, I don't know that there's any way that we can craft any sort of, I think it's going to come down to if something like this were to happen again, what is, what do we do for, step A would be to grant the superintendent the authority to make a mask mandate. What would we do for step B, to say, if you don't want to send your kid in there for whatever reason, that kid will still be able to attend school? That's going to be the problem that we're going to face no matter what we do tonight. So I'm going to call the vote, but I agree with Shannon to see what it says. I, I just don't, I don't know what it does other than maybe calm somebody's nerves for people that are concerned.
Because I, I don't know that, I don't think this is necessary this time. I think we already have, I, I just, I don't think it's necessary this time. I don't think we're on the cusp of doing anything like this. So I, you know, allied fears, I, I don't know. I haven't heard that people are feel for, but, you know, I don't talk to everybody in town. So, you know, I, I recognize.
There's definitely can start out.
Yeah, you know, a concern that I just haven't heard. You know, I think that concern can go, you know, that it can flip-flop both ways, right? Because it is seen as a measure to protect public health and ensure the safety of vulnerable, you know, populations during severe illness, right? So like I said, I'm happy to take a look at it. I'm not, you know, and I, and I also think that, you know, when you look at the, the authority and the power that were granted to the superintendent during 2020, I think some of the issues maybe that people had was that it was, he was given a broad brush, right, at the time. So I, I think that this board, future board, you know, will, will look back and learn, kind of, wait a second, this is what happened during that time. We granted an unprecedented, you know, power and authority to the superintendent at the time. Maybe we want to be a little bit more specific, right? A little bit more direct. So I think there's, I think this is nuanced. I think there is a lot wrapped up in what happened previously and where we are now. And so I, now I'm just talking in circles.
So I'll call the vote on this. So we can, we have the motion to craft a statement, essentially, as, as Danae got the motion there, but the board will work to craft a statement to express the desire to let families make their own decision, in that it will recommend best practices for hygiene. And should anything change in the future, we would have that discussion at the board level. So I'll call a vote, starting with Terry.
Sorry, can I just ask the other thing? So the motion is a draft statement?
Correct. Yes. And then we will vote on that statement the next meeting if it's something that we want to release. Terry, I'll start with you. Roll call vote, please.
Beam yes.
White yes.
Gasoline yes.
Gothy area.
It's yes. Okay. Moving on to the next item is the bond article warrant language, the tax impact statements. As Mr. Kaplan addressed us here in the, before the meeting in the public comment, there's been a request and a, and a question of what is the best way, or what are we legally obligated, what are we legally not obligated to present on the warrant article? Essentially, this comes down to presenting information on the ballots. When somebody goes in the ballot box, they're able to see for a bond article, for any sort of article that's on there, what that tax impact statement looks like. Currently, best practices and what's common practice maybe is a better way to do it. And I've looked at some other ballots. It's you list out that first year, the money that's going to be appropriated for a bond article like this, and then you indicate that that money's going to be actually raised from taxes, the rest of it's going to be used out of the bond. And Amy, correct me if I'm wrong in my terminology here. And so that first year, because you're just doing essentially an interest payment that is considerably lower than year two, which is the first year of bonded interest repayments, once you actually sell the bonds, and you start to pay those off, and they, they waterfall down from there over the next, the length of the bond, 20, 25 years, whatever it might be. So the question for this board is, we've been advised, and we shared the, the legal advice from our team in terms of what the, the best practices are, what they, they had some recommendations in there. So the question for this board is, do we want to change what we've been doing for years and what is common practice of listing something more than just the initial appropriation amount on the actual ballot? Recommendations are having warrant articles that go to the town, indicating you have to list every tax impact. Recommendations that, you know, you can put something on there for future payments, but it's an estimate. And that really does drive this equation is that there, these are all estimates. We don't know when this goes on the ballot, what those interest payments are going to be, and what that bond payment is going to be the following year. The other piece that I'll add to this as well is, speaking personally on this, I do think that there is some agency here. I think that this is a concern with the community that we're trying to hide something. I think it's a lack of trust with this, and that is certainly not the case, because this information is widely shared in meetings like this, and other community meetings that we have. We've had it in graphs before, we've had it in charts, we've had it on the website, we do it at public hearing, we do it at deliberative hearing, it is in the deliberative voters guide, and it is in the town voters guide in some capacity. So the information is not being hidden. Now, whether or not it needs to be on the ballot, that's a different question. So I will open it up to anybody's thoughts that they have, and if there's any action that we want to look into taking for the future. We don't have to decide it now, because we have time to figure out what that costing is, and, and what the language is. End of December, you have to have the official wording and what, what's going to go on the word. No, it's later than that.
Later than that.
Yeah. So we have plenty of time to discuss this, but I wanted to at least get the board's initial thoughts.
Yeah, I will want to send any changes to legal, just to.
Right, yeah, of course. So we'll make sure we have, well, done before the end of the year. I think it'll be easy enough to do, and then we can just plug in numbers as we get closer to time. So anybody have thoughts on this? Anybody would like to start the conversation? Terry, I'll let you go first.
Um, so on the one hand, I really appreciate a member of the public coming to us and, and giving recommendations and raising his concerns. I think those are valid, and I appreciate us making the time to discuss. So thank you for, for putting this on the agenda. I also appreciate having advice from legal. And this is where I really feel like what we do and how we do it, there are a lot of rules around it, right? Like, it's, it's very specific what we can and can't do. And I would be very uncomfortable breaking with precedent. I feel like in this case, I would like us to stick really close to, to precedent and to legal advice. And I would also say that if we didn't have multiple ways that this information was readily accessible, I would, I might feel differently. I might say, hey, there, there's, it's kind of hard to find it, and, and maybe we should at least expand it a little bit. I can understand that if there weren't several, several other ways to get this information in a timely way. What I would say is that as a voter, I feel like I have responsibilities, right? I have a responsibility to do my homework. Our students, we wouldn't expect them to show up to class not having done their reading, not having done their homework. That would not be acceptable. Well, I think that as a voter, you have to do your homework as well. You have to take the resources that are available to you and become educated on what you're being asked to vote on. And we are providing plenty of opportunities for them to readily and easily access this information. And so I would like us to, with that in mind, make sure that we make every effort to have it available. And I do think that they are mailed the voting guide, and we make it very clear in the voting guide. So we can absolutely make sure the language in there is that, hey, we can't promise, and this is variable, and all those things we always say. And I think that we are actually very conservative in our estimates. I know I've been through this a couple of times now, and we are extremely conservative, that we're not trying to downplay it, or say it's going to be cheaper than it is. We actually tend to estimate on the high side, just in case. And so if we weren't already doing those things, I might feel differently. But I do think that we do all of those things to try to be very transparent and very upfront, and I would like us to stick with precedent and legal guidance at this time.
Just one quick note and a comment that you said, Terry, maybe I misinterpreted it, but there, you said there are specific things we can and cannot list. The advice that we got, that there's no short answer, but there is no law or regulation in the state that requires or prohibits the district from including that information. So just wanted to get that out there. There, there is no, what we're doing now is, is, is legal, but there's no requirement that says that you have to do this, or you can't do this. So just to clarify that from what I understood when you were speaking at the beginning. So, Shannon?
That's true. And I think that's why I use the term precedent. We're following precedent, and we're following what a majority of districts do.
Correct.
So I really appreciate this conversation, and I'm glad that it's on our agenda so we can talk about it. When I first started thinking about this, I was, I was sort of where you are, Terry. Like, well, we send the voters guide, you know, we have all these presentations. And then I, I read the advice from council, and I thought about it some more. And, you know, for me, kind of where I'm at right now is, we already provide this in so many places for voters and taxpayers to access. Why wouldn't we try to paint the clearest picture possible on the ballot? Now, I, I would never suggest that we put a 25-year tax chart on the ballot for a number of reasons. One being, that is a estimate, and that's a lot of, a lot of years projected that, you know, may change if we choose to refinance at some point. So I started doing a little bit of homework preparing for tonight, trying to see what other districts who may do it differently, what does it look like? How does it look? And how can we, because I have, we have nothing to hide, right? We are, we are publishing this everywhere. We want our electorate to be well-informed. So how can we do this in a way that paints the clearest picture for folks? So there's no confusion, and there's, there's no sense of like, they're, you know, trying to pull a fast one, because we're not. And so I did, I would encourage everyone, the best example that I could locate was Londonary. And they just, in their last, I think it was their last cycle, they had a Reno on the ballot. And they provided a three-year chart estimate, language describing that it's an estimate on a 20-year bond with the current, you know, assessments. I think something like that's appropriate to provide a, a little bit more context, or some sort of statement. And of course, I would want, you know, to have feedback from, from the district, and from our legal counsel, and all, and all that, how it's worded. But I would, I would have no problem with that. Because again, we are already providing this information in a number of places. And if this helps our community feel, you know, more informed when they come, you know, to vote, then great. That's, that's what our job is. So that's my sense.
Jason, any thoughts for you?
I don't have, I don't have a ton of thoughts. I mean, I'm, I think we are transparent about it, happen to be more transparent. That's how people, people feel, trying to hide things. I do think we would be wise to take the legal advice, and we should have it in the narrative explanation as opposed to in one article itself.
Yes. So I guess this is where my, my confusion comes in, and it, because it's called a warrant, the ballot is the warrant. The narrative explanation, and Amy, maybe you don't know this, is that the body of the Texas is Article 12, and then it lists, where does this piece go? Where does this show up?
For example, the Londoner example ballot.
I'm trying to find it. I can't find it.
I can send you, I can send you the link here right now. I have it. They have the article, and then it's under the article. It's not in the language of the article.
But it's still on the same page they're able to see. So for all intents and purposes, it's on this, the ballot that they're getting printed out, or wherever the.
Because it's a recommendation of legal to put in the narrative more than.
That's, yeah. To me, to me, that semantics, I don't care where it is. If it's on the same page, to me, it's all the same page.
But is it on the ballot?
Yes.
Yes.
This is on their sample ballot.
Yeah.
So that's the question. Do you want it on the ballot, or is it?
So where would it be otherwise? Would you give a separate piece of paper as they walked in? Like, I guess that's my.
You can have narrative on the ballot, right?
You can.
So the narrative on the ballot would do the three-year projection.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, when you put it in the warrant article, that's a little.
Right, then that becomes, I think, more problematic, and probably more problematic legally. That's why.
Under the warrant article narrative explanation.
You're only going for three years. I didn't know there was 20. I voted, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And it gets confusing.
Right.
Same.
Spell out, what a year. Right, they don't have the full chart. They just give, I mean, I don't know if that said it, but I do, but, but I understand, I do understand the like, well, the first year, that's not, you know, I understand that.
First year's not the whole.
I appreciate that.
Right.
Um, being confusing. Um, being confusing to people if they haven't done their homework, right? If they haven't read. Their voters guide and and done all that, or they didn't have it in the car with them that day and they showed up and then they're like, oh, yeah, well, you know, like I I can, I can see that. That's my.
I I am intending to agree with Shannon on this. This is my thought as well. To do twenty-five years is pointless. It doesn't factor in interest rates that we don't know. It doesn't factor in. Uh, revaluations after every five years. It can be a revaluation. I think we're due for a revaluation next year. So automatically. Our numbers could be off going into the first year of the bond repayment. It doesn't factor in any refinancing over the course of twenty-five years. So to me, twenty-five years, it's just eye wash at that point. Three years, I think you could, um, you can make a case for that because it does show that first year. It's in the narrative. We're going to blatantly make it obvious that these are estimates only, but this is what you'd expect. And then you would have the, um, you know, we can even include a reference to go to. This voters guy to look at the full twenty-five year layout if you want to get more granular in the detail. So I would support something like that.
Yeah, but you need to go look at that.
Yeah, so I think we we would need a motion on a great.
Yeah.
How how long taking time to do it? How we doing on equality of speaking time?
I don't think we need to be.
Oh, okay, all right.
No, but we can just do this because she's had some time, you've had some time, so let's continue the meeting.
Okay, I'll be sure I wasn't out.
Let's, let's be productive.
No, I am.
Now you're getting angry because this is a waste of time.
No, I appreciate that.
It's thirty seconds that we're wasting.
I'm ready to talk about it. So I I thought a lot about the, um, years because we had a lot of stuff on the the ways and means worth of the committee. And I think that we should have. The three years, the first year, which is only the second year and third year, because there's two major categories of funding we'll do. One is where. Two through N are flat and one is where two through N are decreasing but significantly higher than one. And I think that, um, really is helpful to the community. And the other thing to think about is the average. Uh, year, because you can say it's twenty-five years and here's the average per year. And I know that's rough. Um, so that's what I recommend, three years recommendation. Now, on the comment about it's an estimate, there is an estimate, there is uncertainty. That's always true. That's not a reason not to deliver information, even the first is an estimate. So that argument should not carry weight on whether we do one or. More than one, um, year because it's all of them are uncertain. And I want to. I get a little much right now, but the refinancing thing is always also another uncertainty. So we shouldn't just, you know, throw it out there, throwing throwing potshots at an idea. So I. I strongly support putting. Year one is only, year two and year three, depending on how, regardless of how we choose to finance things.
Would you like to make a motion to that extent?
I make a motion that we include three years. The first year is only the second year and the third year, regardless of how we finance.
And actually, let's revise this to direct the administration to work on the the language with legal to include years one, two and three. You're okay with that?
Perfect.
Any second on that? Thank you. Any further discussion?
We just, I just want to verify what we're talking about for the narrative component.
Correct, yes, for narrative, yeah. Not actually in the warrant article itself, but below that, much like if you haven't seen one in there. Shannon, do you share the link with everybody?
I do.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, so I just want to couldn't find, uh, looking it up, but they do have. Just, it's underneath the text. It shows you need three fiscal vote and then has fiscal year one, two and three, what the cost estimated tax impact is for each of those three years. So. I think something like that, um, is helpful. So I will, Terry, any comment from you? I didn't have to seem pulled up. Sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you because I think this is a great compromise in between where it still gives a little more information to show, hey, because the first year is. A little bit misleading. I'll I'll agree. It's confusing if you're not super familiar and you say, oh, I thought. If you weren't. As well-versed, you could go, oh, I thought I was just doing that for every year. And so it does make it very clear that it does go up. So I I think this is a great compromise. To give a little more information without it being overwhelming and promising things so far into the future that we can't absolutely confirm. So thank you. I think it's a great compromise and I'm I am fully in support of it.
Okay, I will start the vote with you, Terry.
Uh, Beam, yes.
White, yes.
Gas point, yes.
Got here, yes. Prince, yes. Okay, thank you very much. All ready for very productive conversation. Next item up, we have two items. Sorry, Amy.
I kind of want to have it for graph two, but probably graph three. Uh, I could have some warning. Um.
Michael, we have a job, uh.
Warren article.
Job posting available. If it's not ready for draft two. Thank you. Be careful what I wish for. We're doing now, should throw the computer out the window. Uh, yeah, so we will go to ASA, ASSA negotiations. Do you want to provide any update on this for us, Mike?
Um, so what we're hoping to do and, uh. We, uh, are, want to enter. We may enter negotiations with ASSA. We have, um, some. Meeting dates on the calendar is is included in board notes. We're looking for two people to be part of this. Um, the reason we're doing this primarily is. We don't want to have to do negotiate two. Um, you know, collective bargaining groups in one year. And so next year we have AEA scheduled. And ASSA. We thought if we could enter into. Negotiation with with ASSA this year, uh, it'd be wise for us. As a, an SAU, as we balance things, it would take, uh, it would take. Each year moving forward, we would have one CBA or CCA to negotiate with. Uh, I think it's wise to be agreed that we wanted to explore it. They are interested in meeting. And there's the twenty-second or twenty-ninth, we can get the date after we get the people. Um, but we're looking for two members from here to to work with us on this.
Just to add a quick thing, this current collective bargaining agreement allows for discussions regarding an extension. So this would be the article for an extension, not necessarily a full negotiation, a a one-year. Extension would get us back to, back to the cycle. Um, and might be manageable by the SAU.
But we wouldn't be prohibited from discussing. Uh, multi-year extension if we wanted to, correct? We could, we could open up that as part of the conversation.
That would be then a a renegotiation of the whole contract and just to be.
But for this purpose, it doesn't change anything we're doing tonight and it.
You know, but we'd like this, because the contract has a specific article, we also want to make sure that this is manageable and an extension may be more manageable than a. Full-on negotiation. It's all in discussion, but I just. One, because if we're going, if we're going to negotiate a full-on ASSA contract, that doesn't mean us that much because we have. A current negotiation going on in the S U as well.
Fair, fair.
So, um, and it's specifically outlined in the contract, then an extension is possible. Um, but if the, if it's the board has, uh, obviously if the board has a feeling that it's, it's necessary to do a full-long negotiations, we serve it the pleasure. Um, but. Talking with my, my and Amy. That I think that what would be best to reset the cycle would be an extension versus a whole, a wholly owned giant negotiation. Especially where we are in time, you know, there's just, we're also in, or in October. To do a whole negotiation until we started in August, last time we did ASSA, if you remember. So we lost, I I don't know if we have the time to do a full negotiations. We may not have the time to do an extension, but I appreciate the opportunity to talk about it with ASSA. Because I think it is beneficial for them and us to have a single article on warrant. Um, so it's not comming with another that the community can look at teachers at one stage and a full analysis of ASSA. As opposed to covering the two.
So this should be an article that would cover the FY twenty-six.
Correct. That's the recommendation from us is to look.
FY, sorry, FY twenty-seven.
When your extension, the current contract stays and with this to extend, and I did talk with legal counsel about. The only thing you add is going to make sure on the warrant article is here. It doesn't do anything in the existing contract, doesn't nullify. Yeah, you just put twenty-seven, twenty-eight and the value on the one. If that's what the board wants, if the board wants the whole thing. We just have to, honestly, we just have to talk about it because where we are in October and where we are in others, I don't, I don't believe in, but you know, we have time to do a whole ASSA negotiation.
No sense to overcomplicate things unless somebody else feels that way, but I think going for a one-year extension is, um, is fine. Any thoughts on that?
I don't know. I would like to know what the job is. So you're talking about when it's, when like. This would be done, when are we trying to accomplish this negotiation, what the. Labor lift is, how quickly are we meeting, how how long and are they in the middle of the day or after hours? And then, um, does the board. You being on this as somehow influencing being on future. Negotiations, those are my questions.
I I can, I can answer this. Um, it was typically, we met late afternoons, early evenings, and then sometimes into the the later part of the evening. When we did this in previous years, um, it it, I don't think it has any impact on, I mean, I was on both. ASSA and AEA with Josh the last time around, so the two of us were able to tackle that. Uh, I think that it's a fairly, it's a reasonable lift. I I don't know what an extension will look like compared to the regular one, but I know the regular one was, was heavy. I would assume that this would be considerably lighter because it's an extension, uh, and ideally you're just coming down to the finances at that point.
One more question I wanted to ask is, can someone tell me there's between, there's two chairs, that's usually right. What is interesting is two chairs that.
Um, just having two voices, just having.
Are they equal weighted?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not ones like, uh, okay.
Just having two representatives, so if A, somebody can't make it, you have somebody else there. And then you just have two perspectives and you have two people that are able to to talk things through and then be able to bring it back to the board accordingly.
Thank you.
Terry, any questions from you?
When's the due date? Sorry, when are we done negotiating?
We, it depends how long it takes. I mean, when does it have to be done by?
We have a public hearing. It has to go to a public hearing. By Christmas.
Christmas, okay, thanks.
So, um, if if I can make a recommendation, I I'm happy to to do this one again because I was on it the last time, so I'm probably more intimately involved with. Mechanics of what's actually in that contract. Certainly don't have to be, but I'd be willing to do it. But I'd also be actually interested in having Jason serve if he's interested. Simply because he comes from that educator background. I don't know if we've talked about, if you've done this before, I can't remember if you said that before. Yeah, so I think having.
I'm I'm happy to do it. I just want to be completely transparent. So I. Was a former union member, not currently because I'm in administration. So I don't know if that makes people uncomfortable. Different union. I was part of the American Federation of Teachers. Uh, they are the National Education. Uh.
Yeah, they're NEA.
NEA, so it's a different union. I'm not. Not a member right at this time. Don't know what that means.
Well, that's, that's fair. I I forgot about the union aspect of it, so, um, but again, happy to.
Yeah, ha- happy to do it if if that's. In a wish of the other members.
If anybody's desire is.
I'd like to see this at some point, um, but I think that's great. So Jason, I mean. Think you said it there or you applied it there, but you explicitly say that you feel like you can be completely fair and represent the town of Amherst. Yes, ability and that's, okay, good, thanks.
And that's why you have two as well, because you're not limited to one person's thought.
Yeah.
So. Any thoughts, Terry?
Uh, no, I I would love to see us get back on the cycle. It's what we we were until we had a year where that one didn't pass and that's how we ended up doing. Both in years and it's, and it's hard on administration. It's hard on everybody to do in the same years. So I I hope that we're able to come to an agreement and I agree that you're both familiar with this and I. Also would love to have, um, Jason's expertise if he's willing. So. I am strongly in support of of pursuing this and and the two of you being our representatives if you're willing.
Yeah, you need a motion to create the, um, negotiation subject that, uh, representatives.
Yeah, would somebody like to make that motion, uh? To make the representative or to nominate the representatives for Jason and myself, or if somebody wants to make a motion for. Other people, that's fine, but, um, they would also make that motion.
I'll move that Tom and Jason are representatives to the ASSA negotiation.
Second.
Hey, any further discussion? Okay, Terry, win the vote.
Beam, yes.
Wait, yes.
Gas point, yes.
Ralph, here, yes.
Prince, yes.
Okay, last item, Mike, take it away superintendent's update.
So, um. Appreciate it. Good meeting. Lengthy for Amherst, uh, and lots, we got a lot done. Appreciate the conversation. Um. As you look in in board notes, there there's a statement that I included in there as a recommendation for board members as we kind of get into. Uh, election season, budget season. Uh, as we start to to get into some works that all members can have personal opinions. On the board and school matters, but we want to be sure that personal opinion stated on personal social media accounts outside the board meetings are not a reflection of the board. The board is one entity. I think it's just good practice to keep these things in mind. And when people have all the right in the world to post what they want, say what they want, but when they post on their personal. You know, pages, it's very important that we remain that this is my personal opinion, not a reflection of the Amherst School Board. Uh, this message is being stated at all boards in SAU thirty-nine. I think it's valid and just take it as a recommendation from me. Uh, I think it can make life a lot easier for for many of us. Uh, the newsletter went out this evening or this afternoon, uh, to to people on the list serve. Uh, really proud of, uh, the work that Katie Gary put into that and we have three more coming. And it it just highlights all the good things that are happening and and, uh, the work and it's centered around the framework and how that is, uh. Like being alive in in buildings and what kids think and what teachers think. So I expect more of that. Um, you can see us a little bit more visible on social media and and messages through school messenger. Uh, today we we, uh, learned that, you know, we ask, we ask people to, uh. Sign up to get more messages, you know, from school messenger. And at the end of the workday today, we we have right around one hundred and thirty-five people. Um, both, you know, parents and people in the community without children signed up for it. So that's a good sign. We're going to keep doing that so we can get. Our message out. Um, long-term planning, we had a meeting. Uh, this past Tuesday and there's going to be an update provided to the SAU thirty-nine board. Uh, we're just going to talk about some auctions and how we can move forward with that collectively as an SAU and and more to come on that at the Amherst. Or excuse me, at the SAU meeting next week. Um. Talk a little bit about transportation. Uh. It's a dogfight every day. Um, I I apologize as often as I can, um, for it. It's just not stable. It's not as steady. It is not as reliable. And in the last couple of weeks, we've had some major personnel issues with employees of. Of butlers and Amherst is feeling the brunt of the problems and it is, it is our highest priority. It is something that we work on. Um, and we have some things kind of, you know, potentially. To, you know, on the horizon to kind of mitigate the the. The issue where we're at right now. Um, so we'll continue to work on that. Um, please know that anytime I get an email or a phone call, it is returned. It is returned in a thoughtful, genuine manner and, uh, we're we're keeping, keep plugging away to try to improve it. Um, so I want people to be aware of that. Uh, we're in daily conversations with butlers. Um, last thing in here, and this is just. What I'm looking for, uh, some feedback and and Katie Gary is looking for some feedback. You see some Wilken Projects Communications. Uh, they're informative. You got in there some important dates for the community. You got a flyer. That's explaining what the project is. There's, there's some event timelines and and and. How we wanted to inform people about the project. And then there's some talking points that I'm I'm really careful and thoughtful and intentional about what we want people saying about the project. So I want the board to take a look at that. Uh, I'll be looking for some feedback at the, you know. Uh, next meeting and I'll be reaching out to people there. Oh, excuse me, not the next meeting. If you have feedback, please email me your feedback. And, uh, we're going to continue to work on that. Um, with that said, you know, I want to kind of talk a little bit about what Greg brought up earlier about the video project. It is the responsibility of the superintendent to inform the community about this project. It's the responsibility of the superintendent to support the upgraded facilities to enhance. The educational experience and the learning. And I think we're in a slippery slope when we say where the superintendent can be involved and can't be involved in informing the public. So, you know, think of the otherwise. What if the superintendent was completely silent on this? That's not what superintendents do. They inform on how a project could enhance the educational experience and the learning outcomes for our students and family. And and Greg, to your point earlier, I will always do that. I am in favor of this work. I'm in favor of this project. And this is where we're going to move forward. This community has worked too long and too hard. For people to just not inform the community and let them make a decision. And there's been many J facts, there's been many buildings in grounds, there's been many hours by numerous people. And so I think when you say things like that, you kind of question the integrity and the responsibility of the superintendent. And so I need you to be really careful about that. And, uh, in your document, you have informational. Materials that eventually will be dispersed so people can be informed. And I want to leave it there. But there's any other questions on the superintendent update? Or? Any materials in there? I'm happy to answer.
Right, uh, question on that, uh, last comment there, Mike. I go, trying to find the goal on the, uh, facilities, but I believe, oh, here it is. Goal six, improve facilities reflect the values of our community. Our community has voted on this particular matter once already. It's voted on similar matters that J fac has met for years and been. You know, rejected by the community. We need to, we do need improved facilities to reflect the values of our community. We must acknowledge the values of our community. We want to improve facilities according to those values. We don't want to not improve our facilities. We don't want to have. Proposals that are not going to pass. We want to do goal six. So. You and I may have different views on that, maybe other people in the board might have different views on that, but that is the objection. That is the. What I'm saying is let's, let's do goal six as written, not just improve facilities the way that. The loud people in town want to, or a previous group that has been rejected from town wants to. That's, that's the point. But I appreciate all your updates.
But I appreciate all your updates.
Yeah, no.
So, um. I appreciate, uh, the conversation regarding the anonymous donation. So. And and Tom, I appreciate what you said about the board having editorial purview over videos and things. And also. Mike, uh, Katie, Amy, I, Chelsea. Um, we don't want to put anything out that hasn't been run by people on the mic. We can't. We can't wait every month to to bring you stuff and get feedback. We we don't have that kind of time. So if the board wants to designate a couple of people that liaisons to the communication, because we don't want to put anything out that you're uncomfortable with. And we we need some board support, but we can, we can. Bring everything to a board meeting once a month and say, okay, send this out.
Well, I also don't think that, I don't think that's necessarily necessary, Steve.
But we don't mind if you want to have two people.
But I, but I think the fall newsletter today, I don't know that that needs to be run by the board. That's from the superintendent's office. You're. Putting something out representing Amherst School Board, that at least needs to be run through the chair, I would imagine. Uh, or it needs to be run through the board as a whole, but I think that's a distinct difference from. What we saw today and and other things that have gone out.
Yeah, we just want to, we we want to do this appropriately.
Correct, and I, and I think.
Well, to my point, we're not doing anything inappropriately. We have an Amherst building and grounds. We have a ways and means. We have a school board that guide us and we get feedback from. So not any point, it was never done inappropriately since I've been superintendent. And so I'm with you, Steve, like we, this initial stuff captures most of the materials that will be used. Over the 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 course of the next few months to inform the community about this project. The reason we brought it here tonight was for people to have the ability to weigh in, make sure they're, you know, comfortable with the language of it. And as we continue to work on behalf of the board and behalf of the buildings and grounds and behalf of ways and means, we'll continue to collaborate where appropriate. But, you know, to your point about the newsletter. The newsletter is something we developed and put out. And it's responsible. It's informative. It highlights the direction of things. And it's professional. And so the work that we will do will not be anything but those things.
So, if we have questions, we're going to the chair, vice chair.
No, I want to, I like, I think, um. The chairman's chair do a great job with what they're doing, but they tend to be of the same mind of on this is a matter of what you're presenting to. So I think I could be a great asset to you to be a reviewer of some of the draft information. And take or leave what you want, but I I think to not use me in that way would be a mistake because then you're liable to puzzling out and have a larger backlash. I could help you avoid that. So if you'd like to use me, I'm happy to help you with comments.
So I think we're getting into the realm of what ifs and and.
Sorry, my apologies.
Potentials. So I think we can, we can have these discussions as these items come up. So I think we've, we've. Covered this. And again, I think that there has to be, there has to be trust between. The administration and the board, because if there's not, then this is a waste of time and we can find five of, you can at least find somebody else that will sit in his chair and. They'll be more than happy to to step aside and and work in a world of distrust. I have no patience for it. I have no desire to do that, Shannon.
I just want to make a, just a quick comment on on these types of projects in other districts that I have looked at over the years. It's not uncommon. Um, when a district is putting out a a large request to the community that they do some type of professionally crafted informational video as part of that. That's never been a part of what we've done in this district. Simply because we didn't have any funds available to do that with and we weren't going to use tax dollars. Um, to do that, um, but but it's not, it's not in a common practice to have. Um, you know, a a a video that a district has put together with their administrators and their teachers just talking about. You know, their experience within the building. So, um. I I just wanted to offer that, um.
Okay, uh, any, uh, any final thoughts? I think we're, Terry, sorry, I didn't see your hand raised.
Yeah, I I would just like to. Very. Very briefly remind all board members that we all commit to, once we have voted on something and the board has spoken. That we as a board support it and this would be one of those things. And so we as a board have spoken on what we are planning to put forward. And we are asking our administration to help us in communicating that. And so at this point, it is neither appropriate. For us to say, well, I I, but but I personally do or don't, or whatever the case may be. Um, this is what we have as a board said, we want to go forward with, and I appreciate our administration working with us. To help communicate and inform our taxpayers and our community on on the plan that we are going forward with.
Thank you, Terry. I have full faith that we're all working with good intentions from here. So. With that, I will open it up for our final public comment of the night. If you'd like to come up, you'll have three minutes at the chair. Solo chair in front of the table. Uh, I don't see. Anybody on, actually one person online. Uh, if you'd like to comment online, feel free to raise your virtual hand and we'll get to you after our in person folks are done here tonight. I get my timer out, Mr. Kaplan, and you'll have three minutes when I can open up my watch. When you are ready.
Eric Kaplan, Amherst. Uh, so first and foremost, thank, uh, I thank the board for not only. Uh, listening to my concerns on the tax impact statements, but also taking it to legal and, uh, having this discussion back and forth. And eventually, uh, ultimately. Ruling. For transparency. Uh, showing people what it costs. And that would be the end of my comment. Uh, because I very much appreciate what just happened here today. Uh, that is a step in the right direction for building trust in the community. I do want to speak on one other thing, though, and it pertains to legal counsel. Uh, so this is not a criticism of the board, so to speak. It is, I don't even know if a criticism of legal counsel or more appropriately maybe called concerns. We've previously had legal counsel, um, steer this. District into territory where we blew sixty five thousand dollars at the door for no reason whatsoever. Came back, another attorney said that none of that was, should have ever have happened. So coming back to this particular issue. For years, it sounds like an attorney or some law from her directed this district to, you can't do that. And then even when it was raised initially, they said again, they doubled down and said, you can't do that. You're barred from doing so. However, when I simply, when I looked at the RSA, which is very brief, uh, that relevant section, I didn't see anything of the sort. So, uh, I am very concerned that. Multiple school boards seem to be getting advice from lawyers that is erroneous and and can potentially do real harm in the community. For example, I provided evidence that there were. People in the district that were misled by that. Again, this is not. Criticism of you. I I just asked that the board, whether you're dealing with attorneys. Uh, consultants, anyone you're paying money to that do not work directly for the school district, that that you're paying outsiders. That they might very well have the district's best interests and they might be honest. They might not be, they might not, they might only be one of those. They might be neither of those. So please always keep that in mind. Take everything you hear from, even if they say I'm the expert, I'm the lawyer, take it with a grain of salt because sometimes. Uh, you can take bad advice and it leads the district down bad paths. For example, flushing sixty, I've sat some plus dollars down the tubes, which I'm. Sure, everyone here would rather not see things like that occur in the future. Um, I would. How much time do I have on that?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. I guess I'll say one thing, just to maybe potentially act as a peacemaker. Maybe I'll go over a few seconds for maybe that. Mr. Fritz, if I heard everything properly earlier regarding the concerns over, um. Or was it the raising, yeah, being a donation, anonymous donation. I believe unless I misheard, I think the concern was there's a legality here that this might influence legislation. And and I believe that was the thrust. This is the first, I don't even, I'm not familiar with the legal. Uh, it, can I just finish this one briefly? I don't know. I, this is the first I'm even hearing about. This particular issue. I don't know the legalities or anything. I believe. That was your concern. I don't know if I misheard or if it was really an attack on anyone else or administration. It didn't sound like that to me. So I guess I'm just trying to say that. There seemed to be a little bit of contention there that. Probably was, um. I I I think it was, you raise a valid point and maybe it was, it will turn out to be true or maybe not, but it was definitely, uh, valid to raise the point. And I didn't really necessarily see it as an attack on on you guys. So I appreciate what you guys do as well. Um, and I just wanted to put that out there. But most, first and foremost, thank every one of you for the tax impact issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
You do have someone on the line who wants to chat.
Yep, I was going to go there next. So. Ms. Parisi, we will move you into the panelist role. When that happens, please turn on your camera, name, town of residence, and then you will have three minutes.
Hi, everybody. Um, I just wanted to chime in tonight to let everybody know. Um, something that most of you already know, and that's a lot of people in the community are paying attention to the hard work that you're doing. Um, the hours working on the bus situation, the email responses back to families who are reaching out to the SAU, those things matter. Your newsletter, um, was nicely done. Not only did it look nice, but it had quality information in there about the wonderful things that are happening. At all the schools within our district. And I just want to tell you that that it's a good thing and there's a lot of good things happening here in the Amherst School District and in SAU thirty nine and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Okay, uh, anybody else? I'm sorry, I I skipped over it quickly. I apologize. And when you, oh, I don't have a reset my phone. There we go. When you're ready.
Uh, so Chris Goodrich, Amherst, and, uh, coming from. Now, as a citizen, as a panel member or a board member or. Any other type of member. I appreciate the conversation that was had tonight about, um. The educational aspect of. Informing citizens about the the project. There's a difference between informing and influencing. Informing is providing fact. So people know what they're looking at. Influencing would be sharing some half truths that omit certain things. To. Make people believe they have the true story when they don't. This last year, we had more than fifty percent of voters vote for yes. And my simple math, that means the majority wants this. And every year more people vote yes. Because of the education that you all are providing to the town. I appreciate the education and I hope you continue to do so. That is all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in person tonight? Okay, seeing none, in saying that we have no non-public tonight, I will take a motion to adjourn. Jason with a motion. I got a second.
Second.
Thank you, Shannon. Uh, Terry, roll call vote, please.
Beam, yes.
Wait, yes.
Gasoline, yes.
Got here, yes. Fritz, yes. And it is unanimous, five to nothing. We are adjourned at eight thirteen tonight. Thank you, everybody, for coming.